Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, February 16th. Madam Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Hombdal.
Here.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. Oral communications, it's your opportunity to speak to us for three minutes on any issue subject to closed session. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communications and we are going to recess to closed session. We will see you in about 30 minutes, half an hour, 30 minutes, half an hour. Okay, we'll be right back. Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, February 16th. We are readjourning from a meeting earlier this evening started at 5:00 PM. We adjourned, we did not adjourn, we recessed to closed session and...
And we're reconvening, not readjourning.
Yeah, we are reconvening.
Not readjourning.
Yeah, so I guess we want a report on actions taken during closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. There was one item on the agenda that was discussed, but there was no reportable action.
Okay. If anyone will rise for the invocation by Chaplain Tony Durham.
If you'll pray with me. Father God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts and we thank you every day for the joy and the love that you've given and the blessings that you've given to us. We ask that you bless this meeting tonight as we continue to seek your wisdom and guidance in the matters that concern our city and our government. And we pray that the agenda that you will be working with, with the council, will be submitted with honesty, truth, and love of this community. Give our council insight to lead with integrity and their decisions to be reflected that everything is good for the community. Father God, we ask that your divine protection over our first responders, our military personnel, and those who put their lives on the line every day for our protection. We pray that you grant us humility and always seek your counsel and wisdom. These things that we pray in your name, amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you have not done so already, please silence your cellphones. Okay, presentations, we have a presentation by Management Services Director, Mr. Brad Wilkie. And Mr. Wil, he's coming in the door right now.
Good evening, Brad Wilkie, Finance Director, Management Services Director. This is really a precursor to one of the items that's on the consent agenda and it's really going to be a presentation by Glenn Burdette. Alan is here from Glenn Burdette, he's one of their principals and he was in charge of our audit. We'd like to give a real brief presentation of some of the changes that have occurred nationwide. Many people hear about pension reform and pension costs. This is the first year where a very major pronouncement came out that is applicable to our pension plans and Alan would like to give you a little bit of update of that as well as some other items that were part of the audit process this year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alan. And I'm just saying Alan because I don't want to mess up his last name, so.
Good evening, it's Eschenbach for the record. Pleasure to see you, council and mayor. I thought this evening I would just spend a few minutes doing an overview of the audit and updating you on GASP-68. The audit's concluded, it is historical in nature. The process went very well, this is, each year that we've been here, the process has tightened up, we've gotten through it more quickly and so, again, I can report really a positive year as far as the things that we identified, the working relationship we had with the various city staff and it was, and we got through on the deadline again. When we first came, it was, it was, we were much later in the year here reporting to As Brad mentioned, the biggest change this year was the implementation of GASP-68. The, I'm going to try and kind of keep it simple so I don't get too far into it, but this, we've seen this pronouncement coming for a number of years and really it's taking what was a liability recorded up at the state level and pushed down into the entity level is the best way I can describe it for some of these pension liabilities. And the impact is in your financial statements this year and so you'll see in the statement of net position, the amount recorded was around 55 million at the end of this year and I think that number was roughly what was expected. The number was actually reduced from the prior year because of the results of the investments in that initial year, but I wanted to kind of just give an overview of the statement. The statement was issued '68 and '71 and it changed the accounting and reporting for pension benefits. This is the first year of implementation and it's not unique to the city of Lompoc. It is affecting all government agencies in the US that participate in a defined benefit pension plan. The city contributes to CalPERS for its public safety and miscellaneous plans. Just to give you a compare and contrast on this new standard, before the GASP-68, the long-term liability was recorded in the footnotes only. Now, the new calculation of the long-term liability called the net pension liability is recorded in the statement of net position. When we talk about what the net pension liability is, you have all of your staff who have a vested interest retired or current and actuarially they can, you know, estimate life expectancy and work back. There are a couple of assumptions related to that, but it's, again, it's pretty actuarially driven. And I'm going to, I'm going to say those figures are somewhat consistent, I'm not going to say stagnant, but consistent from year to year. That is offset by the investment pool that they have to offset those liabilities and those numbers are anything but consistent because they are market-driven. And so it's the combination of those two is what you, what we get to when we have the net pension liability. So I think it's important to understand that when you look at that because you are, we are going to see fluctuations in that liability over time and there's really nothing from a local entity level you can do to plan for that, it's just going to be part of what the standard brings. Prior to GASP-68, the pension expense equaled the annual required contribution, basically it was what was paid. Pension expense is now calculated based on accrual accounting, so it will vary compared to what was paid. Deferred outflows and inflows are a new requirement and will accumulate and smooth the fluctuations resulting from differences in actuarial projections, changes in assumptions, and differences between projected and actual earnings on planned investments. So when there's a significant change from year to year, instead of that all flowing through one year, it's going to basically be amortized over about four years, 3.8 now according to the requirements, but it really reduces the fluctuation going like this and it's more like this. So it's a little bit of smoothing. Also, because the standard looks back at your census as of June 30, 2014, these are June 30, 2015 statements, so there's always a one-year lag, all of the activity for that year is what's going into the deferred inflows and outflows. So contributions, payments to retirees, et cetera, that goes into the deferred inflows and outflows. And so those are the two big new items that you'll see on your statement of net position. The footnote's been expanded and present information on all of the city's plans, including the net pension liability, the fiduciary net position of investments, and all the actuarial required information for each plan. These are expanded notes, they are detailed notes, they have pretty much all the information a user would want and there's literally 12 to 13 pages of notes, pages 71 to 83, so really getting into this in a lot of detail. Bottom line, though your pension numbers may seem different under the new requirement, the current financial situation of your retirement plan has not changed, something I can't stress enough. The net pension liability is not new, it's now being reported on the statement of net position, which has reduced the unrestricted net position. And the city will continue to pay its annual required contribution in the same manner it always has. So really the big impact from a budgetary basis is PERS has maybe adjusted their contribution amounts a little bit or increased them a little bit and really that's the impact on a budgetary basis. The numbers showing up on your financial statements, it's a one-to-year entry, it's really not impacting your fund accounting. Okay? Any questions on GASP-68? Rest of the audit went very well.
Mr. Eschenbach, just for, I think we all understand, but just for the public, could you explain the acronym GASP?
Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They are the oversight agency that writes the standards that we have to follow for governmental reporting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wanted to just touch on findings and recommendations that we had. We had one really finding to report to the council and that is included in your Schedule of Federal Awards report on page 11 and it's finding 2015.1 on capital assets. This is one really that's gone back a few years, we've talked about it before. The city has a, basically a process that utilizes Excel, it's manually driven. It has improved significantly each year, we did identify about a $67,000 adjustment this year related to the Excel schedule not reflecting disposal and the related accumulated Staff in the city have a plan to actually get a fixed asset module in along with a separate package that would be less manual in nature and a little bit more, less prone to error, I guess is the best way to describe it. Any questions on that finding?
So you are recommending that we continue moving forward with our financial system?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, yes, we do. Separately, there's a recommend, did you want to add anything to that? We had a separate report, which is recommendation to management. These are items that are less in degree than the other finding that I just discussed, but just items to bring to the attention of staff and the council. Full recovery of net position, again, this is one that we've talked about in the past. Solid Waste Recreation Community Center and Broadband Funds at times have had a negative net position. City has worked to make adjustments and have plans and we have seen those plans be implemented in a lot of cases. The GASP-68 entry, as it was allocated amongst the funds, also resulted in a couple of additional funds having a negative net position. At the end of 2015, that included Solid Waste Recreation, River Park, Campground, and the Aquatic Center. And so our recommendation really is to just continue to review those and evaluate plans for those. Tracking of fixed assets, that kind of ties back to our, to the finding I discussed a minute ago and I'm not going to go into that, but it's, I kind of combined it in my discussion what the issues were. And then the landfill closure cost estimate, we noticed in the current year that the city did not adjust the landfill closure cost estimate. There were some inflation adjustments provided by CalRecycle that were not included in the closure cost estimates. The result was about a $50,000 adjustment that was not material to the financial statements, but our recommendation is to just continue to evaluate that each year. Okay?
Any questions for Mr. Eschenbach? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to staff.
If I may, I'd just like to point out, we're actually kind of unique in California because we have two different plans with CalPERS for pension benefits. And the reason we have two plans, everybody has two plans, one for miscellaneous members and another for public safety members. We're unique in that we have what's called an agency plan for miscellaneous members, going back a little ways in 2003, to help stabilize some smaller agencies, CalPERS pooled many agencies into groups where they had less than 100 members. So at that point in time, our safety program had less than 100 active members, so it was pooled. Our miscellaneous group had more than 100 members, so we're a standalone plan. So we actually have two separate components of our note for pensions because we have two separate plans and they don't report the same information the same way. I just want to mention that because I don't, I haven't looked at every single audit in California, but I have a feeling that we're in the minority of those agencies that have one of both types. So it's more fun reading because there's double the number of notes that we have for the two plans. The other thing I want to mention is that Alan mentioned some things that are mitigating our future long-term costs and we had a meeting this afternoon, an exit meeting, and in the weekly updates, I've been providing the fact that we've had retirees. So as people retire out of our Tier One plan, we set up, through negotiations, we set up a Tier Two plan for both fire, police, and miscellaneous in 2011, around there. And then PEPRA was a state law enacted in 2013, so the fact that we have people retiring and the new people coming in under either Tier Two or Tier Three is going to help us long-term gain some benefit from having people in those plans that are less generous than our Tier One plans. That will take time to realize some savings. When we had a review done by Bartel and Associates who does actuarial reviews, we asked them to come out to look at our plans to see if, if we wanted to go to a Tier Two, what would that be? And their actuarial review made one assumption, it made an assumption that over about approximately 10 years, about half of the people in the city would retire and be replaced and so half of those people after 10 years would be in one of the two new plans. Well, with public safety, with the turnover we've had, which is good and bad because we're losing experience, but it's good because we're putting people into the two newer plans, we've actually had 50% turnover already in the fire group. So what was expected to happen in 10 years has occurred in four. So as people retire from the city, and we've had about 37 people leave the city either for retirement or just separations since June 30th, 37 people out of roughly a 400-person operation that are full-time benefited, that's a 10% reduction. So that's 10% of people that are moving from Tier One to Tier Three or Tier Two. So we're going to be gaining that benefit, but the, what's in the financial statements showing our unfunded liability, CalPERS expects that some of these liabilities won't be fully paid for with assets for up to 30 years. And if you, one thing to kind of look at it is, the person who we hired on February 1st, you have to look at their whole entire life through their working years and through their retirement years. That plan is built to provide for that person, if somebody comes in here, they're 25, that might be 60 years before that particular liability goes away. So a couple of other things we talked about in the meeting this afternoon was going back to the fee study that was done to, that we, that you guys adopted one or two meetings ago. In that fee study, it was a recommendation by the fee consultant to take a look at some of our enterprise funds that really, from a financial operations perspective, are general fund in nature and incorporate those into the general fund. So while we didn't do that this year, one of the things that we're considering to doing is doing that for either 2016 or maybe as part of the budget for 2017, '19. And the ones that were explicitly talked about by the fee consultant were the campground, the aquatic center, the Revolver Recreation Fund, and the Dewey Center. So those, because they're either general fund in nature because they are parks or they're general fund in nature because of the generous support that they're getting tax or otherwise that's like other governmental funds. So just thought I'd add that a little bit and Alan's here if there's any other questions.
Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I had a question about the entitled inactive employees and how they're going to come into play because there's, you kind of glossed on it in the book, but it really wasn't brought out. You know, are we looking at a two or three years down the road coming into play, are we looking 10 years down the road, or how are they going to fit into the picture?
What do you mean by inactives?
Well, if you look at page 73 in the book, it's referencing that we have 181 inactive employees entitled to but not yet receiving benefits.
So those are people that worked for the city, were benefited and...
Moved on or something or otherwise?
Well, they also, they moved on and they were vested and you had to be vested, you had to be with the CalPERS for five years, not necessarily with the city, but vested. And what those inactive people are, they're not retired, but they're not actively working for the city of Lompoc. So they're either left and they haven't retired yet, they haven't put the paperwork in to retire, somebody may have gone to another agency and when they retire from that agency, they will then show up as a retiree from here. So those are people that are in the system, not receiving benefits, but also not contributing as an active employee with the city.
I guess what I was asking is what is the net liability or when is the peak of that coming through or, because nothing really showed up here that said in two or three years we're going to start seeing it or...
Well, the demographics could be, if we have somebody who was here for four years and they left and they're working, and they've been working for 25 years with another agency, that four years shows have them showing up on our system. We have no idea from the demographics, and even if we did, I'm not sure if that's disclosable, about what age limits, ages those people are at.
Okay, I was just, so we don't really know, that's what you're saying or...
Right. Some people, if you leave the agency, you have the right to just ask to liquidate your PERS contributions. So that person would get paid out just like a 401K and they would no longer be part of the system. Those people are not on this list, but the, generally, I'll use me as an example, I worked for another PERS agency before I came here, on their report, I show up as an inactive. So from their point of view, they don't know when I'm going to retire because I don't know when I'm going to retire, but I'm inactive on their plan, I'm active on this plan.
I was going to just add, it's people who are not of retirement age, but it's, it's an ongoing, it's going to be an ongoing part of the process because you're going to have people coming and going and leaving who are not retirement age, but we've got to capture that, that amount. When is it going to come through? Well, we're recording the liability as we incur it, as they're employed here, we're capturing that, but it's not going to get paid out until some point in the future.
So that's, I'm just saying that's a variable, we don't, we're not really sure what's going on in the future.
Well, and, true, you're right. Having said that, our liability for that person, if they retire, we paid in the contributions that are related to the formula that we have here. If they earned additional time at another agency, that's on that other agency. The only caveat to that is if that agency, like we have, the retirement that somebody earns is based on either a one-year or a three-year history of their highest pay. So if somebody leaves here and they're being paid $30,000 and then go somewhere else and they retire as a director and they're making $100,000, we'd be paying our share, not $100,000 rather than the $30,000.
And I will add, the actuarial is...
Mr. Eschenbach, if you go close to the microphone.
The actuarial is calculating that and the assumption is when they reach retirement age. So there is some assumption built into it and that that's when they're going to get paid out.
Okay. I'd like to say I did sit down the other night and read all this and, you know, word for word and it's comparatively to last year, it is, there's a lot of new information, new tables in here, it makes it more, it's called user-friendly, which I appreciate, there's, you know, I got a lot of nice tabs in here, I put in my book of what I like to call, I mean, highlights so to say of the book. So I do appreciate the way it was put together and did spend the time reading it, so thank you guys for that.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilkie or Mr. Eschenbach? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move on to city manager's report.
I have nothing to add from what you just heard, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to go to public comment on the consent calendar. This is, you have up to three minutes to speak to us, anything, anything on the consent Seeing no one rise, we're going to go to the consent calendar. Consent calendar is made up of items that are of routine nature and will be approved by one motion from a council member with an approval unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Does any council member wish to pull an item? Seeing no one, I would move, or I'd ask for a recommendation.
I'll move, we accept the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Any comments? It's been moved and segmented, let's vote. And that passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, now we're going to go on to a staff presentation, it is by planning manager Lucille Breeze giving an update on the motorsports park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, councilmembers. This is our monthly report on the status of the motorsports park. And we're in February now, the, just reiterating our background that the State Department of Parks and Recreation grant in the amount of $998,000 was available in December of 2013 and must be billed by December 30th of 2016. The memorandum of understanding was signed on March 6, 2014 and we signed one amendment which changed the requirement for an RFP for environmental work and named Meridian Consultants of Westlake Village as the environmental consultant. Amendment number two, which was signed in November of 2015, amended the payment schedule for matching funds to be deposited prior to city certification of the EIR by the Lompoc Valley Park Recreation and Pool Foundation. The project was submitted October of 2014 and deemed complete for processing in July of 2015. Meridian Consultants submitted a revised scope of work for the environmental impact study on October 19th and included a cost estimate of $231,585 and a timeline of nine months for completion of the EIR. The foundation has deposited $40,000 with the city and the MOU amendment number two changed the requirement for matching funds to be deposited prior to city certification of the EIR. The city has finalized the consultant contract for the EIR. Funds will be charged to the state grant over the $40,000 deposited by the foundation. If for some reason this project is not complete by December of 2016, the city could be responsible for repayment of funds drawn from the grant. The notice of preparation was completed and we did receive numerous comments from responsible agencies and from the public regarding comments that they felt should be addressed in the EIR. We are currently, the foundation and the consultant... We are currently, well, the foundation and the consultant and the city staff met with the representative of the Santa Inez Band of Chumash Indians on January 26th, to begin the initial consultation, as required by SB 18. The draft project description was submitted to the foundation for review. We always have the applicant look at it, to make sure that they are in agreement with it, since it is the basis for the EIR. We did, late this afternoon, receive some comments back from the foundation, which will be turned over to the consultant for an adjustment in the project description. That draft EIR is due for public review in April of 2016. At the last update, Councilmember Mosby requested the copy of the skydive hangar lease. We have presented with your copy of the PowerPoint, a letter which provided the keys to the site to the foundation, the skydive hangar lease, and the skydive landing agreement, which the city signed, which allows the skydive operation to land skydivers in lower bench. And that completes my update, and I'm available for any questions.
Excuse me, any questions for Ms. Breeze? Okay, so Ms. Breeze, I know we've, we go over this each time, but just remind the council and the public as to the amount of money that the city is obligated for at this point.
What we have signed at this time is the contract for $231,585 with Meridian Consultants, minus the $40,000 which the foundation has deposited with us. The grant will cover the actual contract, it's intended to cover not quite half of the contract, because the amount, there's a certain amount that's only attributable to the drag strip section, and that will not be covered by the grant. So if, if everything goes according to our schedule, and the project is completed by December, the off-highway vehicle portion of the project is completed by December 2016, then the city would not be required to potentially pay any money back. If we're not completed with the EIR, then there will be, we'll have to have discussions with the state regarding our having to pay back funds that were forwarded, or that we charge.
Okay, so at this point, at this point, the city is only obligated for the, a portion that we've guaranteed the state for the EIR?
Yes, what we have signed, we've signed a contract with Meridian Consultants, the city has.
Now, that amount of money that we're obligated for, the foundation has agreed to pay us back?
They are, they are going to pay approximately $118,000 of it. They have, at this point, paid $40,000.
Okay. And, and I know it's a separate agreement, but the foundation has said they were going to be putting in for reimbursement from the state. Have we heard from the foundation as to whether they have put in for their cost reimbursement?
I'm sorry, I have no information on that, but perhaps the foundation could provide that information to the council.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Breeze? Is someone here from the foundation that'd like to report on their status?
John Lynn, Foundation Chairman. Based on some information that was provided us by Sixto about 30 days ago, we were able to go back and make some very substantial changes in our original submissions, and we believe we'll be done with them on Friday. We're, we're about an inch away from being done. You know, Lucille keeps saying that the city could be liable, and yes, that's a true statement, but the city would have to be negligent in fulfilling their responsibilities with regard to the environmental portion of this. So if the environmental portion couldn't be completed, as an example, because of litigation that began, that's not something that would cause the city to incur a liability. The city would incur a liability if it failed to act in good faith moving forward with it. So the, the amount of liability to the city, although it's there, is extremely small. And as she pointed out, if we get the environmental work done, but we don't start the second half of the project, then we have no liability with regard to that. But if we do start the construction, then we have to finish it in a timely manner, and Sixto has said that it could extend into the first few months of next year, if that were needed, that they have a little leeway there.
Mr. Lynn, if the environmental report comes back with some necessary mitigation, is the foundation prepared to pay for the mitigation?
There's money in the grant to pay for mitigation, $150,000-ish? Don't remember, sorry, don't, didn't bring that number with me. So that, that is provided in the grant. There is some mitigation that will have to be done because of a failed prior mitigation that was on that site for the airport runway extension. The city has $80,000 in trust for that. However, we've agreed to work with the city and try to reduce the cost of that by doing what we could do, so that they could retain some of those funds. Opinions vary widely about what mitigation would be required. Really, I don't think we'll know until we get all done. The state looked at it and didn't see a lot of mitigation. I had, we've had three different consultants look at it, and two of them said, no, there's nothing, and one of them says, yeah, I think you have to mitigate all of this, so who knows?
Okay. And would you be willing to share with city staff your list of submission that you're submitting to the state for reimbursement?
Yeah, we can, we can, and actually, it's actually a public document, so when we turn it in, it'll actually be on the state's website again.
Would you, okay, so you'll forward to the staff?
Yeah, let me explain why the, our initial submission. So we had, we're allowed to be reimbursed for things that were for the small park, but we have to provide a match, and our match was volunteer labor. And we got tied up in our shoelaces, because we have a volunteer agreement with the city that requires volunteers to be trained. So when we, we made the initial submission, the only thing we submitted was the hours of those volunteers who were city-trained, and we didn't have enough match to get our money back. What the state said is, no, anyone that comes and volunteers, you can count. So then we had to go back through the daily records for two and a half years to find all the volunteer hours, and that's what's taken a lot of time. Fortunately, we have all those records.
Okay, good. Any questions for Mr. Lynn? Okay.
Appreciate the council's support on this, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Breeze, thank you for your presentation. We're going to go now to oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to the council on any item related to the agenda today.
I object to the new racetrack, so contemplating building.
Please state your name, ma'am.
I moved here 25 years ago.
Please state your name.
Lois Goss. Moved here 25 years ago from the city, where I'd lived a good part of my life, to be in a quiet neighborhood, and I bought a house on the edge, a new tract, on the edge of town, where it was very quiet. A visitor came to visit me, and she woke up the next morning, and she said, wow, how do you stand it? And I said, what? And she said, the quiet. And that's why I moved here, was the quiet. And so now they're talking about building a racetrack right across from my house, where there's a whole row of houses, and new houses there, and it's going to be very noisy, and it will be dusty, and I tried to get my neighbors to come too, but they were all tired and too busy. So I would really like to object to that racetrack, to the location of it, they have to have it. There's always somebody who gets hurt at those things, too. So consider, how would you like it to have it in your backyard?
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Suzie Griggs, and I moved here about 10 years ago, and I came from Ventura, which I thought was paradise at the time. I was wrong, this is paradise, as it turns out. It's an incredible place to be, and I had lived in Ventura when they put the racetrack in down there at the fairgrounds, and I lived about three miles from there. And the noise it came in was just horrible. It echoed through the whole canyon there, and it really changed the quality of life. And I don't know if the ER, EIR, I'm assuming it would check on the decibel levels of what can be expected over here, and really encourage you to make sure that the decibel levels and the amount of dust will be addressed by the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Mayor and council members, I'm Lori Lane, I'm speaking as a citizen of Lompoc. I came here as a student teacher in 1962 from UCSB, and met my husband, and we raised four sons. They were all born here, and when they were quite young, we, we had a 1947 Willys, and we used to go up to Osoflaco and climb the dunes, and I even climbed Competition Hill, driving our Willys Jeep. I'm in favor of the park. I would encourage the community to have a place that boys can go, and be noisy, and can do things that boys love to do. I just, our family home is up in Crestview, and we're right on the flight path for the flight line at Vandenberg Air Force Base, and we see the C-130s coming over. I have friends that oppose it because of the noise, and even though my home is not close to the riverbed, I just do encourage the city and staff, and the community citizens to consider this as a viable recreational area for young people in our community. Thank you for letting me speak, and I pray that God will bless America.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Good evening, Steve Tribble, also a Lompoc citizen. I'm not going to talk too much about the EIR, and that's actually going along through the process, and I know there's people here that are for and probably against the park, one way or the other. What I kind of find a little bit, in essence shameful, is that you're putting a park, and thinking about putting a park in the middle of the city. You know, I have no problem with looking at putting, you know, parks somewhere else, somewhere where it's not, you know, we, we actually already have the dunes. We actually have a raceway in Santa Maria. There are other places that people can go to in the local area to do racing on the dunes, to go see racing. So to think about putting it not just outside the city limits, but right in the middle of the city, where people who already bought houses, bought property, had a specific expectation of their standard of living, when they bought the property, understanding that maybe there's an airport there with small planes, but not in one motocross, two drag racing, I think that's inappropriate, and really shameful, that not only are we looking to do it, but that we're spending $200,000 to do an environmental impact, city funds, that we may not get back. If mitigation efforts come through and say, we can't do this, city funds are now appropriated towards this. We don't get that $1 million if it's not built by 2016. So now my taxes, anybody else's taxes here, are going somewhere where we could be going towards a fire department, that we've been looking at doing, and that we actually do need. Not a motorsports park, that's a recreation area, that probably only about 20% of the community will enjoy, but there will be a lot of people who are coming from other places, dirtin' our area, making noise, partying, and doing that kind of stuff in a city where we all, as community members, like to have the quietness. That's why I moved here. You know, I'm, I work at Vandenberg, I had a choice to, I used to live in Grover Beach, where there were dunes, where they had the racing going on. I moved away from there to come to Lompoc because it was quieter, it was a nicer community. That's changing. I can tell you right now, if this goes in, I'm moving. It's just one way, it's just, there's no reason I'm going to be there, and I'm going to take my money and go somewhere else. So please, and I, I got 40 seconds here, but, you know, I, I also, what concerns me is that not everybody here was elected to the board. I think there's a lot of people on this board that have vested interests in this motorsports park, and I don't think are exactly objective in their opinions about it, and that concerns me as well. Nothing I can do about it, but I, you know, I, I just think it's shameful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pam Wall, local resident. I just want to expound on what he said, and Councilmember Mosby, in the interest of transparency, you should recuse yourself from any voting on this. You are not unbiased. You were head of the motor, the foundation when John Lynn was on the city council. You're storing stuff for them out there. You're not unbiased. Transparency in the city council was, was a major issue, not this last election, it didn't come up that much, but the time before, was a huge issue for everybody that, in every single debate. So I would ask you to recuse yourself when it comes to voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. To conserve time, if people want to speak on any item, if you can sort of start moving forward now.
Good evening, council, I'm Mary Saladino, a citizen in Lompoc. And, you know, we're obviously all going to have different concerns, but we must not forget the value of providing for our youth. And it is speculation that it will be a negative thing for our, our community. We don't know that. It can be a very positive thing for our community. And in regard to noise, you know, we have lots of different things going on in this community that cause noise, and we also have different tools for keeping that noise down that we receive, like earmuffs or earplugs. And I have a neighbor who works in another town all week long, so it's very quiet in my neighborhood. But on the weekends, his great joy is to tune up his four or five cars and his motorcycle. And it is very noisy at that time, but, you know, I never complained to him, because he probably has to listen to my music that I play at nighttime, when he is at home trying to rest for the next day's work. And not too long ago, what was it, just last week, we had a missile go off at 3:30 in the morning? My gosh, I just thought, what is that noise? Well, of course, we're not going to say we have to take our missiles away, because they're very important to us. They weren't here when I came, it was very quiet. I'm just trying to say, I do understand that you want peace, but I also want to encourage us to find ways to work together. If the noise is bothersome to you and your neighbors, provide something to cover your ears. I'm sure you're all watching TV, or working on your computers, or maybe playing music to provide noise for yourself. We just have different concerns. And I think that if it bothers you, try to find a way to deal with it. And we do not know that problems coming from some other place can cause problems, but if they do, we also know that we have a very good law enforcement staff in this community, and I would assume that they would find ways to make sure that nothing bad happens out there. Am I right? Is that in their jurisdiction?
Sure. Okay, you need to wrap up your comments now.
Okay. Thank you for listening, and let's get earmuffs for everybody who doesn't like the noise, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Saladino. Next, please.
John Lynn, Parks Foundation Chairman. I want to cover a few things. I've been to Ventura Raceway, they run open exhaust, it is exceptionally loud. The type of motorcycles that run there would not be able to run at our facility, because they don't have exhaust. Because this facility is paid for with state grants, all of... Because this facility is paid for with state grants, all of the motorcycles, go-karts, quads, none in the motocross track area will have to have California legal exhaust. Not only will they have to have it, we're required to measure the sound levels to verify that they work. We do that now at the Little Motorsports Park. There will be a number of hours each year on 15 different days where we'll have some of those open exhaust vehicles on the drag strip, but the vast majority of the time and the vast majority of the days that the drag strip is in use, we will not have open exhaust. They will be muffled vehicles. And I think the point that was made earlier is that we have a very expensive and explicit noise study coming that will tell you exactly what it's going to sound like at various points in the valley. And I would just ask everybody to kind of hold on, wait till we get there. In the planning process for this facility, we have gone to a great deal of effort to minimize the amount of sound that comes out of it. And I would also remind the council that we gave you 12,000 signatures of support for this project from area residents. In the most recent poll, 72% of the residents were in favor of the project at its current location. And that location was selected because it's below grade, so the sound won't carry well into town, and it is at the very edge of town next to a riverbed in a cornfield. And we're real sure the corn won't object. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Jennifer Tribble. You heard from my husband earlier. I am also a Lompoc resident. I just wanted to also add, I know Mr. Lynn just mentioned 75% of the people in the community are in favor of the project. It would be good to point out that about 25% then who might not be in favor are probably also the 25% who do live in close proximity to the park. I know the very nice lady who spoke earlier mentioned, for those of us who do live close to where this might be, who might be affected by the sound, to invest in earmuffs. Unfortunately, that's not something that we expect to do or want to do whenever we're just living our day-to-day lives in our homes. As a mother, I do agree that we do need to find good recreation opportunities for the youth in Lompoc. I just hope and implore that we find another place to do it that doesn't impact so many residents in their day-to-day living. I know that there's also the idea that we won't know what the noise impacts are or the negative impacts are until this project is implemented, but unfortunately, that's going to be too late for so many of us. Once the project's in place, if it is too loud, if those of us who do own property, if our home values decrease, it's too late for us then. So please, take a very hard look. And not just the noise. One thing to take into consideration that I do hope is also addressed in the EIR is what it means for the community with traffic. I know even coming here this evening, all the way from towards the airport, traveling down O., we actually do have a little bit of traffic for a small community. So what's that going to mean for our streets and our infrastructure when we're bringing in trucks with trailers? I know business is good and I do agree, we need good business and we need people bringing money into this community, but we also do need to take a hard look at the negative things that might come with that also. So please, just consider all of that and those of us, again, the 75% who may approve this process, it's not in their backyard. I will admit, I would probably approve this project if I didn't live right next to it because I do want good things, but nobody wants it right where they live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to point out that Mr. Lynn could differ with me, but I don't think the poll has been validated. I don't know who took the poll. I know for one thing, I didn't take the poll, so I don't know how many people were contacted due to the poll. So I think the number of 72, 75%, I'm not sure where that came from, so. Next, please.
Mr. Ann Murgé. I'm a citizen of Lompoc, 21 years, been on the council, been on planning commission and almost everything else in this town, trying to improve the quality of life. And this project is not going to improve our quality of life in any way. Here's a thought, why don't we put the project on Mr. Mosby's property? It's way out, it's not going to bother anybody and we could all enjoy it, the kids could enjoy it, and I think that would be a good idea if Mr. Mosby would take that on, on his property. I think we all need to step back, take a breath, myself included, and wait for the EIR to come out. I think Mr. Lynn has been very disingenuous, I don't get, disingenuous.
Disingenuous.
Disingenuous, thank you. I can spell it, I can't say it. About litigation, I think after the EIR comes out, there will be some litigation. I don't know how liable the city is going to be, the foundation, I think will be also. But I think we need to wait until the EIR is completed and see what happens then. But there are a lot of people who are not aware of the project and as time goes on, I think they're going to become more aware of the project and the impact it's going to have on our community. So I would ask that everybody out there listening, get involved, read your staff reports and find out what's really going on with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close our communication. Bring it back to the council for item number six, which is appointments. We have a council appointment at large, or council appointments at large, appointments for the following city commissions, and it's a youth commission. We have two terms ending in January of 2018. We have one application and if there's any discussion or if I can have a motion to approve one applicant. Councilmember Humdán.
I'll move the application of.
I'll second.
Okay, it's Leonardo Calvo to the youth commission. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, now we're going to move on to item number seven, which is a council request. This is Economic Development Director Teresa Galavan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Teresa Galavan, Economic Development Director, Assistant City Manager. And I'd just like to go over the staff report briefly with you and as the mayor indicated, this is a response to a council request that we had to discuss the Economic Development Committee formation terms. A little background, very briefly, in the staff report is that in 2010, the city contracted with CAL-ED, the premier economic development association for the state, to come out and do a public advisory service, giving some direction to the development of an economic development program, which was the council's and the community's top priority at the time. And that effort led to a, basically a roadmap that indicated the city should create an Economic Development Director position, create a committee, and come up with a strategic plan, among other things. Those were some of the key items that got us moving forward to where we are today. Fast forward and to more recent times, in the last six months, the city council adopted the general plan update. And as part of that general plan update, we did an economic development element. And in that element, we have Policy 3.6 and Measure 11. I just distributed copies of the element to you. Thank you, city clerk. And basically, those two items on page E5 is Policy 3.6, which basically affirms through council adoption here that the committee will continue to focus on, as per this element, the strategic plan, doing an annual strategic plan and working with other city commissions that have a vested interest in the plan. And then as part of Measure 11, on page ED-7, it also indicates that the city should continue to work with the chamber and the Economic Development Committee and other organizations to develop the strategy, the economic development strategy, to expand existing businesses and attract businesses. So that kind of brings us forward to more recent policies the council has implemented in support of the continuance of the Economic Development Committee. As part of the council request, we had a joint workshop not too long ago and we had one here today with the Public Utilities Commission. Just as part of this year, we're looking at these joint meetings to also discuss general functions of the committees. So in this council request to look at terms and membership, I'd also ask that we please take a look at the general functions while we're going through this exercise so that if there are any updates or amendments that we need to make to the general functions and the membership and the terms that we do those all in one sitting. So with that, I'd like to direct council to the attached worksheet. Attachment one, which basically outlines the general functions of the Economic Development Committee, step by step, as they're outlined in your handbook, the Commission Committee Board Handbook. And suggest that we just take a look at each item that exists for their functions, what the current status is, any recommendations, and get your feedback this evening so that staff can move forward and make any changes based upon council's direction. So attachment number one, the worksheet, is a spreadsheet that, to your staff report, if council would like to.
I think, I think we should probably just go down the list and there's a lot of, some things you're having no changes or some we're going to be deleting, but there's some that it looks like you want some comments and recommendation from the council on.
So I'll just, so the first general function that is listed in the Committee Commission Board Handbook is that the committee would establish the economic development plan. Well, yes, and indeed, we have done that and it is updated on an annual basis. And when those updates are made, then we'll bring back a periodic report to council. Does council wish to proceed in this direction? That was indicated that the council did in the recent economic development element. I just want to affirm that. We'll take that off as an item to create, but now leave it on as an item to annually update.
And I, Councilmember Starbuck.
I was just going to mention, you know, we can update the general plan four times a year, so if you're going to do an annual update as a committee, it can be done at any time, because like I say, it can be updated at any time, if I'm not correct, right, four updates a year on the general plan. So we're not tied to one annual update on this.
We do get four general plan updates. I was just pointing out that our general plan supports the continuance of this activity.
We're talking about the economic development element?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's okay with the council, what I'd like to do is if we have an opinion that's different than the staff recommendation, maybe we voice our opinion there, so as you go down, we'll take a look at your recommendations. If you, if we disagree with one of your recommendations, or if we don't disagree with it, you can.
Absolutely. At each step, I'd like to have discussion. If this is fine as it is to just update the general functions to indicate we have established a plan and we intend to update it annually. If that's acceptable to the council, I'll write okay and we'll move on to the next line item.
Unless you hear from us on this, it'll be okay.
Okay. Hearing no comments, that's okay. Next item. This is an ongoing item that we conduct semi-annual reviews and bring back progress on benchmarks. I recommend that we change that to an annual review, doing it twice a year. Updating a strategic plan twice a year is, annually is a more realistic expectation and it also, again, is aligned with the direction that was given in the economic development element. So I would suggest that we continue to do the reviews, but once a year versus twice a year, of the strategic plan. No further comment, move on to the next item. And I'll make those changes. Next item is to recommend amendment to the plan if needed. We do that when we bring you updates. So we continue. Okay, hearing no comment, that is okay to update. Additional functions. One, conduct a detailed review of the CAL-ED report. We've done that. I recommend we remove it.
I just have one question on that. Periodically, we ask the staff how we are doing, that relates to CAL-ED report, so does this mean that we'll never again hear about the CAL-ED report or?
No, that we will still continue to use that as a document that gave us our initial start and direction. However, I don't think we need to, it was in the general functions when the committee was created as a first step. That step has been completed.
Okay, good, thank you.
Next item. Develop a plan for the city that considers each economic market segment and establishes target industries and priorities. We have done that through the strategic planning process and we will continue to update that plan annually, again, taking into consideration markets, market segments, target industries, and priorities. And we'll be seeking feedback from you when we bring those updates to you. Hearing no.
Councilmember Vega.
Teresa, do we have a little versatility there in how we create the plan according to economics in this city or economics do play a part in the strategic plan? Is that correct or not? Because you know, as the market changes and the waves of housing and businesses and we need to implement some sort of versatility where you can do a little bit of an adjustment or we may, could be going the wrong way, you know, sometimes.
Absolutely. It needs to be a nimble document. You know, updating it on an annual basis is meant to give us that opportunity to assess whether or not we need to make changes due to the economy. And if something came up that, you know, was more pressing, we could do it more soon. However, that's a good plan of action. If no further comment, we'll move on to the next item. Clearly identify the roles of the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Lompoc in the economic development efforts and the cross-cooperation, these efforts. We have done that and the chamber contract is updated biannually, so I suggest that we remove that. Furthermore, the chamber CEO has a fixed position on the committee as well as the Tourism Improvement District representative so that we are always communicating on a regular basis and coordinating our planning efforts.
Councilmember Starbuck.
So TBID and Explorer Lompoc are still involved in this?
Yes. Okay, on that, moving forward. Page two. That the committee hold public meetings to solicit input and encourage community involvement in economic development and its implementation. That is ongoing and we continue, I recommend that we continue that. Hearing no, seeing, oh.
Yeah, I have something here to say on that. The public meetings also should probably, we have another staff member that's working with you now, okay? I'm expecting that that'll probably help you quite a bit and help the committee also. Is there anything we can do to change that a little bit to where our public meetings are going to be more of a meeting where the input is going to be so important and it's going to come right to you and we can make some moves other than just public comment and use the input for us to move forward a little bit more, since you have a little bit more help now on the economic development side? I see these guys over here, they're having public meetings and they're having information, but it seems like with the economic development budget, since the committees are pretty much working with nothing except for, with a zero budget pretty much, except for whatever is probably allowed through economic development's budget, is there anything we can do there to enhance our meetings and what, are we willing to spend a little bit of money also on what, you know, what can we do to make it a little more interesting and get people out?
Certainly, I am pleased to have the additional support for this effort, absolutely, the development program specialists that's been brought on board. And yes, that position will be supporting specifically economic development, including the committee and the committee initiatives. In addition to public comment, we also can bring in folks to give presentations during our actual agendized committee meetings. We also have made a commitment, and I think the committee has recommended we do this on an annual basis, where we invite the community to come in and participate in forums on economic vitality. vitality. So that is a great opportunity to get discussion on some of the top priorities for our plan. So, yes, there are more things that we can do to get that kind of feedback from the community and involvement from the community as well. Okay, moving forward to, I have an okay on number four. Moving forward to function number five, provide a forum for ongoing dialogue between city government and private sector and other government agencies. This is an ongoing process and I would just suggest that we clarify that the review and discussion of specific issues is at council direction and that be clarified in our functions.
So Ms. Galavan, are you looking for direction from council on this?
Not at this time, that it just be written into the general functions for the committee that the specific items, when you want the committee to review them, that council will provide that direction.
Okay.
Any other comment? Okay, with that change, we'll move forward. Function, well, function number six. Review business incentives and policies and procedures of city departments that impact economic development to identify any improvements or potential new programs that would enhance the city's economic development efforts. At the conclusion of that review, the committee may recommend potential programs or revisions of policies and procedures to the council. This has been done and I think that by clarifying item number five above, council may direct, you know, where council may direct the Economic Development Committee to review specific policies, procedures, and programs. By incorporating those two, we can just make them one item as opposed to having a separate item number six. So remove six, incorporate some of that language into item number five, and we would achieve the same effect. Item number seven. Committee members will be selected from, but not limited to, the following economic market segments in the Lompoc Valley and strive to represent the demographic diversity of the valley. This is ongoing. You can see the different sectors that it is recommended that we try and have represented on the committee. Again, this is not meant to be limited to, but suggestions. And we actually do have representation from just about every sector except the Federal Correctional Institute. And we did discuss our need to find a member representing that area, as well as energy. So I think everything else has been, all the other sectors are represented presently. There'll be some changes with some committee members going off, well, that they have gone off, so that does make for a few changes. And I'd also like, on this item, to clarify if council wishes to receive advice from its advisory committee on the slate of candidates. We've done that in the past, maybe that's not, it was meant to be an advisory suggestion as to what we're missing as far as representation from industry. But if there's another way you would like to receive that information, this is a good opportunity to discuss that.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Humdol.
Yeah, the only question I have, and I like what you have laid out here for the different departments, and I don't see anything specifically talking about Hancock College. How involved are they in that committee? Because the one thing we keep running into is that the people are coming in here doing that and we need to have more information from Hancock to the general plan, tell them what's going on. I talk to them out there quite often and I've talked to the board of directors, a couple of them I know real well. And down the road, what can happen, and they're looking at it themselves, is that what's looking nationwide is colleges now that were two-year, going into four-year college. Vence is basically a four-year college. Hancock is looking in that direction. So I think anything we can do to keep them up and keep working with them, we need to do. Hancock's doing a great job with what's going on, but a lot of times Hancock and others don't let the people know what's going on and we need that out in the public.
That's a very important sector and the partnership with Ellen Hancock is very important. We have had good representation.
Counselor Vega.
Teresa, we need a few people in different industries, but have we also looked at if we have too many of the same like-kind industries in the committee because we haven't been able to get other ones? It's just a question, okay? And the other thing is because of the subcommittees and the associate members also, have we looked at their backgrounds? When we also, again, we may have some people in the background that could probably move up, so to speak, in the committee that are already there, that are already donating their time. Maybe they have that background or not? Or do we even look at that? Or do we, you know, is that something we could look at maybe to see that maybe that diversity is there? If you're talking about the penitentiary, we're talking about somebody else? Maybe not, but we want to make sure that we don't have too many of the same just because, to keep our membership, you know? So that would be probably important. I think one of the questions I'll have a little bit later on is because of the appointment process, you know, and if we're actually striving to fill all these industries, how hard have we done it? And, you know, are there people out there that would like to do it? And do we need to reach out just a little bit more to make sure that diversity stands?
Okay. And, yes, the associate member, and we can probably talk about that a little bit more when we get to terms, has been an area where somebody has come on and said, you know, I'd like to start at that type of level of membership and then maybe move up to the regular membership. So that has been sort of, to address your question about have we had an area where people move up, yes.
Yeah, and I think with the appointment process, when they come to us, you know, we have requested before that we get the applications a little bit ahead of time so there's no dissent, that we don't have time to actually, if we wanted to interview these people ourselves so that we won't say, hey, we're not included in the process, it should be an option, you know, not just, yes, the economic has screened them. But if we did want the option, each and every one of the council members or the mayor, we should be able to sit down and talk to them also before we actually do the appointments since it's been said that we appoint. You know what I'm saying? So.
Okay. Counselor Mosby.
Are there any other committees or commissions that make recommendations to council for appointments?
I don't think so, is what I'm hearing from the city clerk, and it is open for discussion.
In my term, I'm on two, well, I was on two commissions, I'm still County Parks Commissioner, but the appointments do follow the elected appointer and the term as well. But I can see that we have here, you know, your long list of people that you want in different groups and categories. And I think simply putting down the list of the people that you have and what category you have and not necessarily coming through with a recommendation because who's making the recommendations? Is it one person? Is it voted through the group making the recommendation? Is the whole committee, is the whole making the recommendation? If you're making the recommendation, is it voted? And do you have, you know, 19 yeses and four nays? I mean, when you're making that recommendation, I think it should, it shouldn't be, you know, saying, hey, we picked that person. Just give us the list, that would be my recommendation. Give us a list who you have, what areas you're missing, what areas you're filling, the applicants are fulfilling one of these categories, and let the council determine on that. I think that's, it would lead to, I don't know, I guess, I don't know, how do you put it? There's clarification, that's clarification. It's more of a directing student. The way it went, happened the last time, the way I saw it, it was a list, there's a list of five, there's the recommendation. You know, it was kind of basically, you know, I felt it was pushed down our throats, really. I don't think it was a chance or an opportunity to go and communicate with the people. It was, here it is, here's our recommendation. It didn't say, yeah, it was 15 people before this people, who was it? Who recommended? And-
If I might just make sure I understand, go ahead, please finish.
Go ahead.
So you'd like to see, you're suggesting it might be better to have a list of all the applicants, the applications, and then the areas of need and perhaps if any of those applicants fit into those industries?
Yeah, give the list, what are you trying to fulfill? What, you know, what segments, what categories? Here's the options. And let council make the determination on it. Because, again, I don't think any of the other committees or commissions make those recommendations. And, you know, I think it's a, has a tendency and could potentially be biased in the decision-making. And did 100% of the Economic Development Committee make those recommendations?
Well, I can share with the group, with council, what has happened. There usually is either an ad hoc or an executive committee that reviews the applications, typically an ad hoc. Anybody that wants to participate from the entire EDC on that ad hoc is able to do so. They'll look at the applications and then come up with recommendations for council. So that's how it's come forward. The idea is the ad hoc is looking at our strategic plan, looking at what our membership should include, that it's diverse, and making the best recommendations they can based on that. There hasn't always been time to bring it back to the entire committee, but the committee has been informed and given the opportu, each committee member has been informed and given the opportunity to participate in that process. So it's not just, you know, it's open to anybody that wants to participate from the committee. And it is a recommendation. It's meant to be advice from your advisory committee, completely, you know, up to your discussion and your final decision.
Yeah, I feel that some of the items that happen here, that if you're not the friends of some of the people in the committee, you're not necessarily in the selection process of the committee. I know of people who've tried to get on and because they weren't part of the clique or part of the section of that committee, they weren't selected. So I have seen it in the past times of happening that. So my recommendation, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, that if you had something, you give the list, what list they're trying to hit, what notch, and let the councils and future councils make the decision.
I just would reiterate to all of council, that may be your perception, but what I have seen from the committee members is they are working towards the strategic plan goals and trying to bring you that, those recommendations based upon our strategic plan and what, what industries are not represented currently on our board, given the best, given the pool of applicants they have. I don't, I don't see that friendship has been part of any of the discussions at all. So it just, if there's a way that we can bring it to you so it doesn't feel that way or it's not perceived that way, certainly we don't want to have that perception out there so we can do something different in the process if you want us to try a different format.
Okay, just a comment. I think Counselor Mosby is correct that no other commission makes recommendations, with the exception occasionally, the youth commission, if they have multiple applicants, they will make a recommendation to us on certain individuals. It's unusual. I need to ask the advice from the city attorney right now. Before we make any decisions on any of these, we need public comment. So like this one, the makeup of the commissions, we should bring this back after public comment for decision to staff or recommendation to staff?
That would probably be best.
Okay, so everything else, to this point, we've accepted your recommendation. It looks like after public comment, we'll bring back-
Mr. Mayor, technically, what you said would apply to all the things you said okay on too, so.
Correct, yes.
I'm not troubled if you give your feeling and still get public comment, knowing that you may change your mind depending what the public says.
After public comment, exactly right, so.
So you would like to go through the rest and then have public comment and we can come back to this one and maybe a few others that are going to be more discussed?
Yeah, because I think as the city attorney says, we really need public comment on the entire list, even the ones that we've conceptually agreed to. Is that correct? Yeah, so we'll continue to go through, but certain ones, we're gonna, unless there's something objection from the community, we'll just accept your recommendation.
Okay, moving on then to membership. On the next page, and we'll be coming back for more discussion, I think, on that item, is what I'm hearing. So on the next page, just because some of these different items will also probably be areas that you want to discuss further. Currently, the membership of the committee is 23 members appointed by council at large. Some recommendation is the committee has recommended removing one associate position. So there, instead of 23 members, it would be 22. Hearing no discussion, that generally seems to be okay. We'll continue on. Of the 23 members, 15 of them are regular members, they're the voting members, that is the number we use for quorum. So if we have eight members, we have a quorum. Then the next, and I'd recommend we continue that, of the remaining 23 members, the remaining eight are associate members, which means that they vote, they have to come to all the meetings just as a regular member, and they vote if we need to make quorum. So, and of those eight associate members, one permanently is slated for the chamber CEO and one is permanently slated for the Tourism Business Improvement District or Visit Lompoc Inc. And that is so we have in place a structure for us always to be communicating on economic development and tourism activity with these groups. Any comments on that part of the membership? Okay. There's a five-member executive board selected by the entire committee. And during the workshop, I recommend that during our upcoming workshop where we review the strategic plan and provide updates to it, I recommend we have the committee discuss whether they want to continue having an executive committee. And that was part of our discussion at last year's workshop and I would suggest that we revisit it again just to make sure that the entire membership supports that structure. Council have any feedback on that? Okay. The chair and the vice chair would be on the executive board committee and I recommend that remain as long as we have one. Three-fifths of the committee members shall reside within the 93436 zip code. I think that's fair. Continue, okay. Or the terms, I think this is the area where we'll have more discussion. Initially, in the Committee Commission and Board Handbook, the terms were stagger, there's language in there to stagger the terms so, because when we started the committee, we wanted to make sure that we always had continuity and we had some senior members and some incoming new members. So I think we can remove that because the staggering has now, we've been in existence long enough that the staggering is taking place. That's in place. So we could remove that. The, all the terms except for the chamber CEO and Visit Lompoc terms shall be for four years with the positions staggered nearly equally to terminate on even numbered years. So we, again, would have that continuity and longevity. The committee recommends council members have requested that some of the terms be changed or perhaps all the terms be changed to match council terms. And so that's why this is a discussion item and I think this exactly was the council request. And the committee has proposed to the council that they consider appointing a member to match each of the council members' terms for a total of five members that would match your terms. So, open for discussion.
Counselor Mosby.
This has kind of been, I think what it was, the council request was to come back and discuss this general item right here. And one of the reasons why I would support a council direct align appointment is, as an example, you've had difficulties in the past with attendance at the meetings. I think last year, or year before last, you had some time, you had some of the people hadn't made significant number of the meetings. And it was difficult. I know it's a volunteer situation, it's difficult to get the people there. And I've noticed now you do, you kind of roll call, the roll call comes through and you, you know, the people aren't here, people are giving excused absence for the people not being there. But it's still an excused absence and it's very difficult when you're on a committee or a commission and you're not able to get 100% attendance. It's, keeping that connectivity and continuity through the meetings, I feel is important. This is one of the reasons why I felt that is an appointment with my other commissioners or out there. If I found want to stay connected, I realize there's some difficulty. It would provide you as the overseer of the Economic Development Committee, another avenue to communicate with a council member saying, you know, hey, you know, what's going on? And the connection, I'm not looking that it's directly the person, you know, I'm putting my three best friends on or my one best friend on, whatever it might be, but you have that avenue to reach out. And I know you're having difficulties in the past in getting the attendance. That was one of the main reasons why I felt that the appointment should come directly and follow the terms as well. That way they have that connection and follow-through. Provide for other inputs, you know, the council members can be more directly a liaison. A comment has been made, well, now you have, you know, 23 of them are all part of your appointment. That's not kind of the way it works. You have a handful of people that you do connect with and I think you get better connectivity to try to connect with a handful than all 23 of them. To see what is going on, with my commissioners, I talk to them monthly to see what's going on in the other, in the parks, the utility, safety, on down the line. I try to stay connected. That way I don't have to go to every one of the meetings. And likewise with us. And likewise with us, I don't, I don't know how many times anybody really talks, other may seeing them in passing to people on the Economic Development Committee, but to give more connectivity with the council. You feel a little more, like, that's my appointment, you know? And if you find out your appointment's not showing up, you're gonna, hey, what's going on? So that's one of my feelings and, and not just one, but all of them. And then following the, the, the council appointments that come along. That's why I felt that it should. And I think any other except what you, youth and what airport, what doesn't follow? Senior, what doesn't follow a council, council seat and appointments?
I'll, I'll address, while the city clerk is looking that up, I'll address the absence policy. And, um, I, we went ahead and moved forward with making sure that all the committee members, we reasserted the absence policy that's in the handbook. When we first started, I did not enforce that per se to the letter of the, uh, to the letter in the handbook. So when that came forward, that we need to start taking a look at that. So if we need to have some members that maybe don't, can no longer make the commitment and we can bring on a members that, that are willing to make the commitment or can make the commitment. What we did was we sent out a, a letter. We told the entire group, we said, from this point forward, look, we want to make sure you're aware of the city's policy regarding absences on volunteer committees and we will be, um, following it from here forward. And since then, the absence concerns have gone away. So just, so you're aware of that. That is something that we actively, um, took a step forward and are now being proactive in how we manage that. And if a member can't be there for three consecutive meetings and has not let us know, they don't have an excused absence, then I make a phone call to them and then the city clerk lets them know that, you know, we're, we're going to have to follow our committee policies.
And I noticed in the last, I think it was November's meeting, you had, uh, there were quite a few of excused absences that were there too. It does make it difficult for them to stay involved with the committee. I forget the number exactly, but probably five or six of them were the excused absences that day. And it does make it di— I know it's difficult, I know it's volunteer group. I'm, I have to say, I'm 100% attendance on every one of my committees and commissions in my time, and it's, it's a big sacrifice to make. But even the excused absence, even if it is excused, it still doesn't have the involvement that we might necessarily need in those, those committees.
Um, the policy does say that if it's excused absence, it's, it's excused. So we're following the policy. And we, um, with 23 members, we usually have a, a quorum. So we've been able, we have had a quorum consistently, so we're able to conduct business. These are the committees that have at-large. Okay, the airport committee has at-large appointments, the library committee, the mobile home rent stabilization board, the oversight board for park maintenance, the senior commission, and the youth commission. So that's one. Seven out of 13 boards have at-large appointments.
And those, I don't have quite the same, I think more your utility commission, your parks, public safety, we have a more direct connection, I think, with the other ones. The youth commission, I don't think the council has quite as direct of a, a connection or the airport commission or, um, I see, I mean, I feel more connected to the other ones that aren't at-large appointments. And then I guess maybe that's what I was trying to do is give you, give something more and, and the recommendation of, of the five that you have down here is something that's, it's not what I was asking for 100%, but I'm willing to, to accept your guys' recommendation of taking a total of five members and that way you have one and, you know, and work on that way.
Okay.
Councilor Vega.
Teresa, um, my question for better connectivity with, um, with the council and, and the economic development, I know they're working hard, they're doing everything. What, my question is if the at-large appointments, if it was turned around and what would be the loss of having five at-large and two, two appointed each from each council member? You know, would that still work under your strategic plan for long-term goals and everything? I'm here to help, but I think we're, I think my, from my perspective, I'm, I'm kicking myself in the tail here to make sure that I'm a positive part of this, okay? Because I see all the people there where they're brainstorming and I'd like to help. And I, I think we all need the help. I think you have more support in, in the economic development sector. The reason I ask about funds and money, I hate to see these people, uh, running around and with basically very no money, you know, on their budget. I think that probably, um, we should probably talk about what, what you guys do have to spend on all these things as far as beautification, you know, economic vitality. I think that we have a unique opportunity to make Lompoc something special with the right plan of action and, and, and know what kind of businesses we're, we're looking for and help them go get them. I mean, if we, if we can't at least help you guys fill these positions according to demographics and type of, uh, industries, we should be a part of that process also to see if we can find somebody to fill those open gaps. If it's something from the penitentiary, it's something like that, it'd be nice for us to know. I'd love to help on that one. Maybe we can bring someone in, have the interview process come through and, and fill that need so that we can be and, and maintain that diversity. So I guess my question again is, um, I would be more apt to, because of what I hear here with the council, you know, having two appointments per council member, going through here, the, the diversity is still there as far as terms because you have four years and they're staggered. There's one two-year term with the mayor, but the other two are staggered and they are four-year terms if done correctly. So that would be my, my question to you, to see what that, how that would work.
According to the strategic plan and, um, the important thing is that we have the diversity. And I think that's, I'm, you're all very clear on that. So whether it's a ratio of one appointed person to each council member or two, the important part is that we have the diversity and the continuity so that we have the staggered effect. So we have some senior members always on the committee. The, I'm just gonna ask, I'm not certain if, when we advertise for the appointment positions and how do we get you involved earlier in the industries we need represented? Perhaps when we post the, um, positions that we have open, we could also post what industries we are needing so that you would have, just as soon as we all have, the same information.
Um, how about, you know, when the application process comes in, we, we get the applications at the same time as one suggestion. And also through the, um, through the interview process, um, I'm not sure exactly how we can be involved with that or if not, at least, um, by attending the meeting, obviously. If we knew that these people were asked to attend, you know, we also have the option. We always have the option to attend the utility commission meetings or, um, economic development, you know, if we wanted to be, um, doing our due diligence there. But also, you know, I remember the comment that was made that the disconnect, one of the EDC members, it stuck to me, and that's why I'm trying to, uh, trying to help a little bit more, is they're saying there's always going to be a disconnect if you don't attend the meetings. That's telling me that we're not getting enough information back if we can't attend some of the meetings, okay? So we need to, as far as the council. And then it comes back with the council saying, council is ultimately responsible for all decisions and it's all through the guidance of the council. But a lot of times we don't hear it because if we have multiple meetings and we can't attend, as you know, um, we're not in, in the know on that one. We don't know when someone's been asked to go and sit there and watch one of the meetings or if they're gonna actually be interviewed or spoken to. Again, the other committee members that are on the side here that are associate members or whatever, we don't know what their backgrounds are or anything.
Um, to, a point of clarification, we don't have a formal interview process. And I don't believe there is one for any of the committee commissions and boards. So right now, um, the EDC doesn't have a formal interview process and council does not have a formal interview process for any of the commissions, committees, and boards. The applications, I don't think there's any problem with us sharing the applications with you as soon as we receive them. So that is a commitment that can be made. As far as who's coming to meetings, um, if they've been identified at the beginning of a meeting, even if you aren't there, you can see in the minutes that, that, uh, staff, you know, who's in the audience, if they've made comments. So just some other ways to, if you can't be there.
I guess, I guess on the appointment thing, I'm not sure. I know we have to go to public comment and we have to see whatever, how that works. But that would be kind of the direction I'd like to see us go. You know, that way there's no excuses, no rock throwing. We're here to help each other.
Okay. Okay, next item, thank you. Then the meetings, uh, this is the meeting, how often they should be held. And that would be the executive board. Right now, the functions read that that board should meet monthly. It could be considered six times a year. If the group wants to meet more than that, that is absolutely fine, um, from a staffing point of view. On the larger committee, right now, the functions read that it should meet a minimum of four times a year. However, the committee has felt that in order to keep business moving, they have chosen to meet monthly with only a couple of exceptions of dark months. So they've been meeting more than their general functions require out of a commitment to the work. So those are all the items.
Okay, um, before we go to public comment, I'd invite anyone from the Economic Development Committee, if they're currently here, if they have a comment that they'd like to make.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members.
It's morning someplace in the world.
Steve Pepe, um, I'd like to focus on a couple things. The first one, you, you went fairly easily through number five, and I'm not sure you understand, uh, the implications of that. It wasn't really fairly, it was not clearly presented by Ms. Gallivan. The recommendation is, and this is coming from the city staff, this is not the committee, that, uh, only specific issues directed by the council be ones that the committee make recommendations on. That, uh, is a sea change. If you look at the commissions, committees, and boards, which applies to all 14 of them, it says, "Commissions, committees, and boards are to advise the city council and manager on matters within their area of responsibility and interest as prescribed by state law, city council, and its ordinance." Number two, "Help focus attention on specific issues and problems within their scope of responsibility and recommend actions and alternatives for council consideration." If you go to the Economic Development Committee, which I believe is in your packet, number five, is "Provide a forum for ongoing dialogue on economic issues between the city government and private sector and the government agencies." Number six, "Committee may recommend potential programs and/or revisions of policies and procedures to the city council." If you accept number five the way it's been proposed, the Economic Development Committee is going to be the only committee, board, or commission that cannot on its own initiative come to you with a recommendation. That's coming from staff because they don't like the things we've made recommendations on. You'll remember the business tax, they weren't happy with us on that. They were unhappy with us on the street impact fees. And that's why they want to cut off the recommendations from the Economic Development Committee on its own to you. What they're saying is, you should decide what you want a recommendation on and then ask us. And I would submit that that's not the way it ought to work. That's not the way the handbook is set up, that's not the way our charter is. And one example, had that been the way we did it, you would have never got the recommendation on the ad hoc committee with the Schumash because that came from us, completely out of, uh, other areas. And that's a significant sea change. And so understand what you're being asked to do. You're being asked to muzzle the Economic Development Committee because dissatisfaction by the staff with the way we have expressed ourselves on staff proposals. Uh, on the issue number seven, um, I would point out that as far as I can recall, and, uh, every time we've come before you with appointments, we've not come with just one or two, we've come up when you're four, five, six, or seven. Uh, and there might only be two or three openings. And I specifically remember, we made a proposal, an urge that, uh, we have a representative from the Schumash, uh, and the, the city council decided, no, they prefer to have somebody from the school district. And I remember that specific discussion about, we made the point that the Schumash are a large employer with 800 employees, uh, who live in our community. And the point came back, well, the school district has more than 800 and so you folks decided to pick somebody from the school district. So by no means have you been a rubber stamp and by no means have you been given, quote, a slate. You've given plenty of choices and we've told you why, uh, we've made those choices. And the other thing that needs to be emphasized is all the other committees and boards you deal with are single-focused. They have one item they deal with, whether it's the airports or youth or seniors, or parks and rec or whatever. It's very narrow. And you want people to deal with an existing subject matter. The Economic Development Committee does not have a single focus. We're supposed to do economic development and it's broad-brushed and it's supposed to be, uh, people who are thinking out of the box and people are gonna bring you ideas and alternatives, uh, that you wouldn't have. And you can have a whole bunch of people who want to be on the youth commission and whether you pick A, B, or C, you're probably gonna get the same result. On the Economic Development Committee, I would, I would submit to you that its strength and the reason it's been so successful with no funds, no budget, is because of its diversity. And I would suggest that, um, you ought to keep with that. The, um, other item is the, uh, proposal to, uh, have, uh, 10 or five, members appointed, uh, directly by you and not at-large. I would, uh, ask you mechanically to think about how you're gonna do that. When we got the first Economic Development Committee back when, we had no African-Americans, we had no Latinos or Latinas, and we had no Asians. And it took us four years by bringing recommendations to fill that gap. So on your committee, if you each recommend two, because of the Brown Act, you can only talk to one other person and you can't do a serial discussion of A to B, B to C, C to D, and D to E. So all of a sudden, you're gonna make 10 proposals, five of them are in the restaurant industry. And then you're gonna have a public discussion about which one of the restaurant people you ought to have. Let's even take it further. We've, we've done a good job on African-Americans, uh, Latinos, Latinas, and, and Asians, but we've only got a couple of each. And what are you gonna do if you, all five of you propose a minority? You're then gonna have a discussion, which is the better minority person to do this? Because you can't talk to each other under the Brown Act. You can only talk to one other person. So mechanically, I don't think it's gonna work. And it's not gonna work because you don't have a single focus. You're not looking for somebody concerned about the airport or parks and rec. You're looking to try and get 15 people who are as diverse as possible in terms of their ethnicity and their gender and as diverse as possible in the industries that they represent. And so as a practical matter, I just don't see how you're mechanically, uh, going to do that. And I saw as, when Teresa was going over this, I had a chuckle at the last one. We'll only meet four times a year. That's what I was told. One of the things when I go on, is I ask two things. Do you want any money from me? And secondly, what's the time commitment? Oh, we're only gonna meet four times a year. Well, I ended up on the executive committee, ended up being the, the first chair. We were meeting the executive committee nine, 10 times a year, meeting on the regular committee nine, 10 times a year, and then doing all the other stuff. So there's a lot, uh, that's going on and the committee is, I, to my surprise, has not balked at it. The attendance issue, I would, I would submit to you, nobody has made the case the attendance or lack of attendance hasn't any way impacted on the work of the Economic Development Committee. So my point on that, where's the beef? Where, where's, what's the problem? You're trying to address an issue that doesn't exist. It was an issue raised in a newspaper and Mark Twain, who knew a lot about newspapers, observed that if you don't, uh, read a newspaper, you're gonna be uninformed. If you do read a newspaper, you're gonna be misinformed. And you were misinformed on that attendance issue, it's a phony issue, it doesn't exist. And the newspaper has never once, never once, even though we've pushed them on it, come and shown any time that attendance on the committee has had any adverse impact. And this is a committee that's supposed to meet four times a year. We're meeting 10 or 11 times a year. It's, the executive committee's supposed to meet monthly and, and we've been doing that. But the executive committee meeting monthly, that came out of ourselves. That wasn't something that came from the Cal Ed report. We, we put that together because we recognized that given all the things that are going on and giving the meetings that you all hold, on, and giving the meetings that you all hold, we really need to be talking to each other on a monthly basis. And if we don't do that, then months are going to go by, and you're going to be asked to make decisions without any input from the Economic Development Committee. So I would, in conclusion, urge you to take another hard look at number five and recognize that the Economic Development Committee is the only committee out of 14 that is prohibited from making recommendations. And I don't think you want that. I don't think it's good for the city. I understand why the staff doesn't want it because we've had, unfortunately, two confrontations. Fortunately, you made the right decision on both of those, which was to reject the recommendation of the city council, of the city staff. But for us, the City of Lompoc would have made a serious mistake on those two issues, and you should not make us the only committee that cannot make any recommendations. Thank you.
Mr. Pepe, after public comment, we'll come back and discuss that as a council. But in the meantime, as you go back to seat, would you like to try to wordsmith something for us on that, on the recommendation?
Number five?
Sure.
It's called delete.
It's called what?
Delete. It's an obnoxious proposal.
Okay.
It really is, and it's offensive proposal, quite frankly. And they tried to slide it by you without any real discussion, which makes it even more offensive. Because I wasn't going to show up tonight. I'm off the committee. I've served my time. I no longer have any responsibility, and I'm glad I came up. But that really is an obnoxious proposal that the staff would make.
Thank you, and thank you for your time that you have served. And thank you for the wordsmithing.
Janelle Osborne, most recent Chair of the Economic Development Committee. I too voice most of the concerns that Steve Pepe shared with you. I will add to that, that where you have removed to conduct a detailed review of the Cal Ed report, that instead it should read, "Conduct a detailed review of the economic development element of the general plan 2030," because that is our-
Which item are you talking about?
Item number one, under functions. It says, "Conduct a detailed review of Cal Ed report," which we have done, and to remove that, I agree, but our new touchstone should be the economic development element of the general plan for 2030. That has become the new document to which we should seek to help fulfill issues within that as much as it is council's directive. So it should become a new directive for us to review that. So by not mentioning it, not putting it in the functions, we aren't called out as a reminder to regularly do that. So I suggest that be added. To the mention of how are we filling the positions and the recommendations? For those of you that have been on council prior to the current election that resulted in Councilman Vega's election and the appointment of Councilman Mosby, council will remember that you had difficulty filling some of these positions, and asked for, the council, asked for the committee, to review and connect with the community to see if there might be individuals that we knew through our connections with chamber, or rotary, or business connections that we do business with who might be interested in filling this. So they weren't via friendships, they weren't via buddies, they were via outlets that we worked in and connected with that may be able to fill this. As a result, we brought forward names that we recruited, individuals. Why don't you put an application in? Are you interested in this? You seem really curious about what's going on in our community. Or you have a really good handle on this sector, you should put an application in. When we have our ad hoc committees, as a member of that, we review them not based on the name. We sort through based on what are our open positions, what industries are we missing, and on these applications, what industries are they representing? And then we go through and we look at their experience and their background within the community and their connections. And then we chose, as committee members, to reach out, because we do not know these individuals most of the time, and have a discussion. We invite them for coffee. We invite them to a meeting. We invite them to have a discussion about their interests so that we can see if they really do have an interest in the committee, or if they just want an appointment. There is a difference. We need individuals who want to be there and want to do the work and want to be committed to the community. If they're just seeking an appointment to get their name on a piece of paper, there is no reason to have them on the committee. This committee is a lot of work. It's a lot of time. It's a lot of relationships, getting a lot of discussions that have to go on, and a lot of research to come up with ideas that think outside the box, that look at other communities and see what they've done successful, and to look at our history and see what we've done and what we might not want to repeat. So again, we do not look at this by whose name is at the top of an application. We have looked at it based on what industries are lacking and have made those recommendations. As you will note, when you receive them from us, we state what sector they are representing and why we're pushing it forward. Each time that we have come forward with an annual report, we have tried to present you with a graph and a detailed list of who's representing which industry. So go back and look at our periodic reports. Go back and look at our annual meetings. All of that information is on the website. All of it shows you what industries we have representation for. We are not hiding this information. To you, Councilman Vega, and to you, Mr. James Mosby, you were appointed, you were elected. We reached out to you as soon as these events happened and welcomed you to come to the meeting, welcomed you to get to know any of the appointees, and build those relationships that you want to have in order to hold us accountable. I totally understand that you don't want to be held accountable for 23 people at large, but that does not dismiss the fact that you are able to pick up the phone, send an email, or come to a meeting, and pick three or four of us to develop a personal relationship with so that you can hold us accountable. The fact that you have chosen not to do that is not on us, because I have talked to several of our committee members, and we have all reached out to several of you. There are council members here who know that I was already appointed when they were elected on during their cycle, and I picked up the phone, and I built a relationship with them that I did not have prior to that election. So it is possible to get to know members that already exist. So changing it to just the five that are currently open and not disrupting the work already being done by those 10 members that exist would be the ideal situation, is to take the five at-large positions. And finally, changing the attendance mandates in your handbook is a mandatory review for all committees. The fact that we elect to meet more than the four times a year, that's all we should be held accountable to for attendance, is those four times a year. That's what our minimum requirement is, to have a meeting a minimum of four times a year. Hold us accountable for those. Attendance doesn't mean we are getting or not getting work done. We get a lot of the work done via ad hoc committees, the other committees we sit on that are a liaison back to what's going on to the community. And finally, I enjoyed all four years. I look forward to doing more for my community. As a result, it has been one of the best committees to have a full education of what's going on, both with city government and our local business community, and I don't regret a moment of it. Please don't destroy a structure that is vital to the ability for you to do your jobs and do them better. This is a think tank for you that you should take advantage of and be willing to hear even the dissenting voices that we bring forward. Thank you.
Jeremy Ball, I'm on the Economic Development Committee. I just want to keep it super brief and not too dramatic. I just wanted to, I won't say any names, but in the past, I've been with the committee for a couple of years. I do remember there being a couple of council members who did appoint people who unfortunately, for whatever reasons, those people could not hold themselves to the attendance. The rest of us showed up, and we're still here. So just something to consider, that while I respectfully disagree on putting two people up, because it's, we're already showing up for free and volunteering, and that's extra management for you to have to make sure that those people are representing you and showing up, and also being a part of giving real good advice back to you. Just something to consider. Also, since Mr. Mosby's been in office, or was appointed, we have not, again, had any problems with attendance, haven't had any issues with meeting quorum. I think if we were competing against a few other commissions or committees that occasionally don't meet quorum, I think we stand pretty strong in that category. At the end of the day, you need to do what you need to do. But I'm very proud of a couple of appointees, not appointees, but people that you've approved to join our group. We just got a big get, and we got the COO of Lompoc Hospital District. We all know one of the biggest potential things that we have is growing the medical industry here in Lompoc. It's not minimum wage jobs, it's higher-paying jobs. And so we're bringing that expertise in. We also had, the youngest member that we've ever had joined us, Asian-American descent, early twenties, started her own business. We need people that are interested, that want to participate in this and show up. They came to us. They wanted to be a part of that. So I hope that in your decision-makings, you appreciate the people that actually do want to be here. We're all available to be interviewed. We all have some really interesting backgrounds. We bring a lot of expertise. So please don't blow that off, assuming that because you don't know me, or you don't know some of us, or you may know someone else, that we're not capable of doing something really positive for Lompoc. And I think you'll see through the suggestion of giving five appointees, or hoping to meet in the middle there, that, I mean, that's a start. We're definitely open to that. But at the end of the day, we want to do right by Lompoc, too. We don't want to compete against you. And I'll end by commending Councilmember Vega. Came to our last meeting, and I have absolutely not agreed with several things, but he took the time to reach out to me and communicate with me, and we spent some time and got to know each other and just a little bit more about that. And I would encourage all of you, and I'll do my best to participate in that, but get to know some of us so that you don't assume that it's expertise that's not valid. There's a lot of really, really, really great people that could do a lot for this town. So for your consideration. Thank you.
I'm Maria Hall. I'm the newly Chair of the EDC. Not good at public speaking. Anyway, I just wanted to reiterate what everyone else said. The attendance, I agree with Steve that it's been a non-issue. I don't, a lot of our work, like Janelle said, is done in the subcommittees and the ad hoc committees, and then we come together to give the update. And then also, I can't remember the other thing I wanted to talk about. I think it was that I thought the prison would be a good segment to have, since they are a very large employer in Lompoc. So just want to reiterate what everyone else said. Thanks.
Thank you, Maria. Anyone else from the EDC? We still have 19 members up there someplace. Okay, well, thank you all. Again, thank you for your volunteerism, your work. Now we're going to open it up for public comment on this item.
Anne Rouget, citizen of Lompoc. I'm on the Library Commission. It used to be the Board of Trustees, but under our new city manager, we're a part of a city department. When you talk about you don't have contact with the commissions, and you like your special people, or you're, you know, I like to make appointments, we are appointed at-large for that very reason. At-large means the whole community can apply to be on the Library Commission. I believe that the council has a chart, at least they did when I was on, that says on, for January, Mr. Mosby goes to the Library Commission. Mr. Starbuck goes to the Public Safety Commission. And it's all lined up. It's a big matrix. And so far, we've seen three of you at our Library Commission meetings, and I thank you very much for taking the time. That's the way you find out what's going on with your commissions. You don't wait to have them call you. You don't have to call them. Go to the meetings. Read the minutes of what they're doing. Same with the economic development. They have minutes all the time, and they're meeting all the time. That's the way you're going to find out what's going on. You have to read, which is a good thing to say coming from the library. But you do. You have to read the minutes. You have to see what's going on. Come to the meetings. I know it's hard for you to get out and about, but please, we invite you, all of us that are on commissions. Our pay is, you know, we're earning our money. So I wish you would come out and see what's going on with the different commissions. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, John Lynn. You know, when the Economic Development Commission was proposed by Councilmember Starbuck, and I was certainly a strong second to it, one of the things that we had the advantage of doing as a council was, we each picked three categories, and we were assigned to go find someone for those categories. So I can't say that they were at large positions, but we were responsible for filling them. So maybe we had a little more connect than you guys have today. So probably having one person appointed by each council member is not a bad idea, but you guys need to pick a category that you're going to be responsible for, so that we don't damage the process that we've created. I agree with Mr. Pepe, and we disagree and agree on various things, that number five is a bad idea. Specifically, the Economic Development Committee, unlike all other committees, all the other committees really have some lockstep things they're responsible for doing. You know, I serve on the Utility Commission. We have a very specific set of things we're responsible for doing. We're not really out there trying to reinvent the wheel. On the contrary, the Economic Development Committee is trying to reinvent the wheel every year, because the wheel changes in their world. So I think number five is probably a bad idea. Councilmember Mosby and I were looking at the Economic Development Committee, and we were reading what I helped write a very long time ago, and his interpretation was one, mine was another. And I think what I would say to you to strengthen that is, the committee shall have someone from each of these categories among their 23-ish members, either members or associate members, and the rest of them can fall where they may. And if that list isn't what we need for today, I happen to think it still is, but if it isn't what we need for today, then you, as a council, should decide and make those changes this evening and say, "Okay, well, you know, this category is antique, and we need to add this category." So those are my thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the community, public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment. Bring it, oops, I'm sorry. Yeah, bring it back to the council. So-
Mr. Mayor, members of council, would it be appropriate for me to give some clarification on some of the comments?
Of course.
Thank you. I'd like to, I'll just start at the top. I made a couple notes. One, there was a suggestion that we add the economic development element to function number one, and I think that is a very good idea. I'm glad that was brought forward, and would it also be in support of that? Next page, item number five. I'd like to provide a little clarification. The recommendation is to keep item number five, but to, using the mayor's words, wordsmith that. So my understanding is that if it's related to economic development, that it would be within the purview of the functions of discussions for that committee. The functions that we will update here, anything written in the functions that is part of their purview is something that can be discussed in those committee meetings. It is, when it's an item that maybe is needing to come to council first, or that isn't very clearly directly related to economic development, and I'll use the example that was given by Mr. Pepe, impact fees, that's a transportation impact fee that we were discussing to do street improvements. From staff's point of view, there was confusion on that item, and we are looking for clarification as to how the workflow goes. And those are the items we'd like to clarify in this revision process. So when there is an item that is related to economic development, by all means, it is appropriate for the committee to have discussion and bring suggestions forward. The Schumash example is a very good one. That clearly fits within what the committee functions are, and staff could bring that forward based upon the fact it fits clearly in the functions. Where we've had a couple of areas in the past where committee members, parts of the committee, or even the whole committee, has had a different point of view from staff, we aren't trying to muzzle the diversity of points of view, but we are looking to clarify the workflow and flow of communication. And from staff's point of view, when it has to do with a budget or a policy item, we want council's direction before we send something that isn't directly related to the committee's general functions to them. So that's item number five. And again, I do see that it could be wordsmithed more clearly there. My little note didn't make all that clear. make all that clear. Item number seven, when it comes to consideration of appointments and terms and industries represented, another good point was brought up by Mr. Pepe regarding the mechanics have changed, and my mind went to another area. Please consider, when you're talking about making any changes, we have six appointments that are coming up, plus six regular appointments, and I believe it's two associate member appointments, and I can confirm that for you shortly, during this council's term. So, making five changes to match the council members' terms is feasible, making ten can also be a little bit more problematic, so you want to keep that in mind. Or, you know, it means removing somebody to appoint somebody different, so keep that in mind. And I think, those were the areas I just wanted to respond to. Thank you, if you have any other questions, let me know.
Okay, let's bring it back to the council for discussion. We'll start with item number one. It has been recommended that instead of removing that, we change it to, I believe this is what we're asking, change it to a detailed review of the economic development report. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, what am I hearing?
So, on number one, it is recommended that instead of referring to the CAL-ED report, we add the economic development element as a document that we'll refer to as a guiding document for our strategic updates.
Okay. Council, discussion on that? Okay, can I, okay, so, I believe we can accept this whole thing with one motion if we just, well, let's vote on the changes. So, if I can have a motion to change that from remove to, this is item number one, so. Well, the ones that we make any changes from their recommendation, I think we should vote on individually, and then we can just vote on the entire slate. I mean, the remainder is one motion, so. Okay, so I make a motion to change number one to restate that.
Conduct a detailed review of the economic development element.
Okay, so that's my motion.
I'll second.
Need, turn your microphone on.
It's on, I thought.
It's on?
Yep.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. And that's proved five-zero. Okay, I don't think there was any discussion on item number two for any changes from that. Okay, so, two will wait, we'll make that as one slate. Item number three, I don't think there was any discussion on making any changes there. Any discussion? Okay. Okay, item number four, I don't think there was any discussion on that. Okay. Okay, item number five. My recommendation on this is that we send this back, ask for staff, and maybe the executive committee or someone from the EDC to come back with new verbiage on that, that we can accept. Because right now, I don't have a clear indication, other than deleting it, if there's an alternative to that, that the EDC and staff can work with. I'd like to, so my recommendation is that we ask that one to come back at a future date.
And I just want to make it clear, we didn't intend to delete it, but to wordsmith it. So, that works from staff's perspective.
Wordsmithing, yes, I'll go with that.
Okay.
Just real quick, I mean, then why don't we just, under the recommendation of number six, get rid of the whole recommendation, remove by clarifying five. I mean, review business incentives and policies and procedures of city departments, that is encompassing everything that we're trying to say.
So, I'm sorry, the recommendation was to leave five, but wordsmith it and delete six by incorporating aspects of that into five. If it falls clearly within economic development purview, what would be recommended is that the functions outline, the wordsmithing outline that.
Doesn't function six basically say what they want to do anyhow?
Within economic development.
So...
So, my recommendation would be to just remove the recommendation and leave it.
Okay. I'd like someone from the EDC to come up and comment on that.
So, I took, Janelle Osborne, I took the time to do some wordsmithing for you. Combining five and six, provide a forum for ongoing dialogue on economic issues between city government and private sector and other governmental agencies by regularly reviewing business incentives, policies, and procedures that impact economic development, in order to identify any improvements or potential new programs that would enhance the city's economic development efforts. All of that states that it's related to economic development. If it isn't related to economic development, we shouldn't be looking at it. The final statement should then read, the committee may recommend potential programs and/or revisions of policies and procedures to city council and staff. Some of it may not need to come all the way to city council, it could be under staff's purvey to take those recommendations into effect and put them into whatever they're working on, because it's not necessarily something that council has to approve, so I think adding and staff would be helpful. So, basically, it's not saying procedures or city departments, it's just looking at incentives, policies, and procedures that impact economic development to keep it under our purvey. If it's something you'd like, I can hand the written description to you.
Okay, Ms. Galavan, could you comment on that?
That sounds reasonable, I think the deletion of the city departments is the part that works, because I think that's where we've had our confusion in the past, is if it's something that pertains to another department, there's been, we just want to make it clear that it would not necessarily go to the committee before it came to council. You would need to direct that they look at it, if it pertained to, you know, beautification in urban forestry, or, for example.
Councilmember Starbuck, say your turn.
I'm assuming that this discussion is within the context of what the city manager was identifying initially of the commission issues, of making sure that it wasn't going to be adding workload to the staff that's going to take time away from things that you want done. So, if it's with that understanding, then I think it's consistent with what you've been talking about.
City manager, would you comment on that?
Yeah, well, I'm still a little reeling from some of the comments earlier on the topic, because I was trying to understand how it could possibly be considered obnoxious when we thought we were doing our job. I know what we're trying to do is get resolution to the issues, get an agreement, so we can move forward. Off the top of my head, from what I heard, it sounds reasonable to me. I just, I think I'd like a chance to look at the wording and take it under advisement and bring it back to you. I like the idea that we'd bring something back, that may be the successful wordsmithing. I do just want to make sure, you know, the fact is, my position's not going to be changed from the point that the city attorney's bringing up. We want to be careful without stifling the fantastic contributions and great creativity that come out of the various commissions, including and particularly this one. In the course of that, I just want to make sure that we don't have a situation where we've got one set of instructions coming in one way to staff, and another set of instructions coming from you. I never want to have that conflict. Clearly, this is the body that's running the show, and so, maybe if we get a chance to review and absorb that, we'll be able to come back and give you a more solid recommendation. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck, are you okay with that then?
No, I'll agree with that, I'm just saying that really, it's, I think that we should not mark the status as done, and it's basically with the removal of city departments, it's really, we could use this, but that's fine, I don't want to stifle the Economic Development Committee because of this.
Okay, so, my motion is to return five slash six back to staff, for them to work with the EDC, to come back with a mutually agreed upon recommendation. Okay, so that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes five-zero. So, just as a reminder, we'd like a mutually agreed upon recommendation. Okay.
And just to clarify, you want that mutually agreed on between the current EDC Executive Committee and our economic development staff?
Yes. Thanks. Okay. Okay, moving on to seven. Okay, what's the discussion on seven? Councilmember Hamdung?
You know, I was sitting here talking about numbers, sitting on everything else, is that there's fifteen different statements in that line. Not everybody, we're not going to be able to all find fifteen, you'll find somebody have two. But I think we need to stay within that categories of people that we need on that commission, and however you set that up and put it together, that's going to be the important part, because that's what has happened. Early on, they were trying to get everything together, but right now, they're all set in the same direction. You've got every industry that we want to get involved is lined up here, and that's what we need. And I think that's, by taking that and seeing, how many on a commission, I'm not sure if I want to go down to five, or two, or four, I still want enough in there that we have people in there, more than just my appointee.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck, Councilmember Vega, or Councilmember Mosby, do you have an input on this, this seems to be an issue that the two of you are having? So, are we saying seven is okay as stated? Okay. Councilmember Mosby?
Again, if you look at the language in here, it says will be selected, and probably should say the will, shall be selected. If you wanted getting fifteen from that list, but it will be selected, but not limited to, can lead to, well, you can get it from here, but not, so, you might look at changing the will be to shall be.
Are you making that a motion?
Bring it for discussion.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I'll just kind of mention here, you know, personally, I would much rather see highly motivated people that want to be there over somebody we've drug out of the auto industry. So, I mean, if you can find somebody that wants to be there over, we need you on here because you're in the auto industry. I mean, that's where I think the shall would be the benefit over the will here.
Any other discussion? Okay, then I'd like a motion and a second to change that from will to shall. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? And let's vote. Okay, that passes, so it goes to shall. Okay, moving on to...
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, did we determine, did we make a motion on the five members? As part of number seven?
That wasn't part of number seven.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we want to continue with the slate of candidates?
That, I believe, other than the wordsmithing it to from will to shall is what we agreed to, so I guess the answer is yes. Okay. Okay, now we're moving on to the membership. And that would be the first line, twenty-three members appointed by council, any discussion on that? Okay. Fifteen regular members, any discussion on that? Eight associate members, of which is set as a chamber CEO and visit Lompoc representative. Discussion on that? Okay.
Just to be clear, what's listed there is going to go from eight to seven, that's what's being suggested.
That is, unless there's, say that again?
What's being suggested is going to go from eight associate members to seven associate members.
Exactly right, we're going with staff recommendations, yes. Okay, the next one is, five members of the executive board selected by the committee. Any discussion? Okay, so all these are going to be staff recommendations unless we change it. Chair and vice chair on the executive board. Any changes to the recommendation? Seeing none. Okay, three-fifths of the committee members shall reside within zip code nine-three-four-three-six.
Yes.
Okay, any, okay, we're gonna, okay. Terms. Language regarding establishment of staggered terms. Remove staggered language, the recommendation, remove staggering language, as that has happened. Staff recommendations. No discussion on that. Okay, the next one is, all terms of office, except chamber CEO, president of visit Lompoc, representatives shall be four-year terms with positions staggering nearly equal to terminate on the even-numbered years. Recommendation is to have a total of five members appointed by council members. Any discussion on that? Okay, Councilmember Vega, you were recommending two, do you want to, Councilmember Mosby, you were okay with the five? Okay. Councilmember Vega?
I'm okay with the recommendation, as long as, you know, the diversity, you know, I heard Mr. Pepe over there saying that we couldn't do it, I don't believe that's true, that we couldn't maintain our diversity, but I, and you know, another comment I'd like to make, the EDC, you know, I understand they're doing a great job, and they seem to be resistant against any little change, but I would say our recommendations are meant to be positive, at least from my end here, okay? I'd love to work with them, I do understand attending the meetings is very important, I'm not going back on that, but I'd like it to be on a positive note, because I see to be resistant to any kind of change, it seems like it has a little negative connotation, you know? Sometimes the council is ultimately responsible for everything, and the goals and everything, so, it works both ways, it's a two-way street, so, wanted to make that comment.
Okay, the last one is, meetings, executive board shall meet monthly, consider, their recommendation is that it's a minimum of six times a year. That's staff recommendations, Councilmember.
I think that it is a recommendation, but if they need to meet six, seven times a year, it's based on what's before them and how fast they can get it done, so I don't, the four is permanent, but there should be no limitation if they have to have, because there's things that will be coming up down the road that are going to have to be involved in.
Yeah, the recommendation is that they meet a minimum of six times a year, if they need to meet eight, nine, 10 times, they would. Any discussion on that? Okay. And the last item is, committees shall meet minimum of four times a year, the recommendation is to continue a minimum of four times a year. Any discussion on that? Okay, so, with one motion, we will approve the ones that we did not make any changes to, and that is item number two, item number three, item number four. And then under membership, the entire section under membership, the entire section under terms, and the entire section under meetings. terms, and the entire section under meetings. So, entertain a motion to approve staff recommendations on those items. I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I wanted to clarify that this, this will all come back because it has to go into the handbook.
Okay.
It has to be changed by resolution. But I'm very glad we've clarified, there are only two items that we need to finesse between now and then. We have clear direction on the rest.
Okay, so the rest of them, we don't even have to make a, make a motion. Okay. So, you're coming back to us with the items that need changes then? That's correct?
We were just discussing the timing. My understanding is, yes, we will be coming back to you with these to go into the handbook. My understanding is that we are actually doing them not as we're able to, not after all of the meetings. No. As soon as we're able to, instead of waiting for all of the committee, commission, and board handbook things to be done. So, as soon as we're able to, but we have some work to do, the committee, the executive committee. And just also, not to belabor this, but I just want to, one other item that's on here is not part of the motion that you need to vote on, but if there is, we will be going into a strategic planning update process in the next several months, once we have new committee members. And if there is any feedback the council would like to give us as we go into that process, you're welcome to do so. It doesn't have to be at this moment, although it is an opportunity, or you can come to one of the committee meetings, or you can talk with me. So, I just wanted to make that clear. And then I, just before we make our final vote, I would like to make sure this satisfies the council request of council members Mosby and council member Vega.
They are nodding affirmatively.
I see. Okay, I think we had three people that asked, did we fulfill their request? Okay, thank you.
I'm happy that we had that discussion, okay? Thank you.
Okay, and from what I understand, we do not have to make a final vote. We've recommended the changes. You're going to come back to us at a later date with the changes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank the EDC again. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break before we go on to item number eight. Boy, that went on a little longer than I thought. City properties for possible disposition. Administrative Analyst Laura Candy.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Laura Candy, and I am the administrative analyst for the city. I will be presenting a report to you tonight that goes over properties that are owned by the city that are being considered for possible disposition. Staff has taken inventory of all city properties and has evaluated their current use or possible future strategic plans. Properties that sit without a current use or purpose require maintenance at a cost to the city, and they hold a substantial amount of liability from illegal dumping or criminal activities. A PowerPoint slide presentation of these properties will be reviewed to give a better idea of the size, location, and appearance of each. The slides are in an order that can be followed with the City Properties for Possible Disposition spreadsheet and are grouped according to certain requirements or areas for policy discussion. In the first group of slides from one to three, staff has determined that these are presently marketable properties. These properties have no known covenants, conditions, or restrictions, and would make good development prospects. The first slide is the property located at 518 North T Street. This is a .32 acre lot, and it is a vacant lot in the middle of a residential area. It offers ample opportunities for a multi-unit complex since many surrounding properties are also multi-units. You can see on the top part that this is a highlighted area of the lot, and the bottom part on each of these slides will be the picture of the lot. On slide two, this is two lots side by side on a corner located at 1404 and 1408 West College Avenue. Both lots are vacant, and each are .15 acres totaling .3 acres together. Slide three are two lots side by side on a corner located at 110 and 114 South K Street. Both lots are vacant. 110 South K is a .08 acre lot, and 114 is .24 acres totaling .32 acres together. From the view in this slide, the street located on the right is South K Street, here, while the other two sides are bordered by alleys here and back in here. The next group of slides from four to eight represent parcels that are located in our cultural resources overlay district due to their location being within the vicinity of where the old mission once stood but was destroyed by an earthquake back in 1812. Staff believes these properties are also presently marketable. However, these properties will require disclosure that any digging on the property will need to be accompanied by an archaeologist present in order to ensure that any artifacts or architectures are properly handled for preservation. They also will need to have their general plan and zoning designation changed from open space currently to their adjacent properties designation of low-density residential and 7R1 for single-family residential 7,000 square feet. Slide four shows two lots side by side in a residential area. Both lots are vacant. 510 South F Street is .07 acre, and 5.14 is .26 acres totaling .33 acres together. Slide five, this is a .41 acre lot located at 520 South G Street. It is a large vacant lot in a residential area. Slide six shows a .25 acre lot located at 525 South F Street. It is also a vacant lot in a residential area. Slide seven is a .41 acre lot located at 539 South F Street. It is a large vacant lot also in a residential area. These ones are a little bit easier if you look at the top picture where the lot is outlined. You can see where the lot is. Slide eight is a .21 acre lot located at 316 East Locust Avenue. It is a vacant lot in a residential area also. The next group of slides from nine to 13 consists of parcels that staff encourages council discussion on to determine a desired course of action, taking into consideration the current and future uses of each of the properties. With each slide, a brief synopsis of what the current use of each parcel is and any known facts or future purposes or uses intended of the lot will be presented to facilitate a discussion to ascertain what council's direction for these lots will be. Slide nine, this is a .16 acre lot located at 119 South H Street. It is commonly referred to as the pocket park. It is a vacant lot in the old downtown area, currently adorned with a community garden-like setting and murals. Slide 10 is a .40 acre lot located at 211 South I Street. It is a vacant lot in a residential area. This lot actually was bequeathed by former mayor Charlotte Benton to be used as a children's library, which due to the building being deemed inhabitable and consequently being torn down, strategic plans were redirected to alternately purchase the new bookmobile. Staff is presently in the discussion and planning stages with the Charlotte Benton trustees to determine the best use for this site, given that an alternate path was pursued. Several options are being considered. The site can possibly be developed into what the trust envisions, taking into consideration the amount of money that is available and the overall ongoing maintenance costs, or the property can be deeded back to the trust for their ultimate decision on disposition. Slide 11 shows Westville Park. It's located at 1300 West Fur Avenue. The total acreage of this site is 1.97 acres. It is located in a residential area. This property has a taut lot and a couple of park benches and small barbecue grills with a portable outhouse. You can see in the right, lower right-hand corner. If sold and developed, it is estimated that possibly seven to eight houses could fit in that area. This would generate new revenue to the city from additional property taxes. Slide 12 is a .64 acre lot located at 428 North I Street. It is currently being leased to the Community Action Commission and a train shop. Since the city's main core mission is not in the business of leasing property and it has no intentional future strategic plans for the property, discussion should take place on the disposition of the property, whether to continue leasing it with the city retaining the maintenance and liability, or selling it. Slide 13, this slide contains two parcels located across the street from each other, one at 312 North E Street and the other at 312 North F. The 312 North F Street contains a historical structure that I've put a green arrow there to point to, and four Quonset huts, as well as an electrical substation. Both properties are currently used for some storage, but most of the lots are not fully utilized. 312 North E Street is a .4 acre lot, and 312 North F Street is a .52 acre lot. They are located in an industrial area, and there are many buildings in this area used for the wine industry. It is suggested to at least look at selling off the 312 North E Street property and moving all storage onto the lot at 312 North F Street. It can also be considered to possibly lot-split 312 North F Street and sell off a portion of that. The next group of slides from 14 to 17 display groups of city parking lots that were acquired through redevelopment agency funding and therefore are subject to pawn sale to the requirement of negotiating a compensation agreement with the taxing entities involved. These properties also carry a requirement for any development that may occur on the lots to provide parking for the surrounding businesses since the downtown overlay district ordinance adopted in 1993 allowed for commercial businesses with no parking requirements since parking was made available to the public by way of these parking lots. Past appraisals have suggested that the highest and best use of the properties would be commercial development. Past history has shown that there have been several documented development proposals made over the last 25 years, most of which have been large hotel proposals, including a Holiday Inn and as late as 2008, another three-story hotel. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm going to, okay. Slide 14 consists of five lots side by side located at 200 through 216 West Ocean Avenue, and they make up a portion of the overall downtown parking lots the city owns. The total combined acreage of all five lots is .96 acres. Slide 15 consists of three lots side by side located at 130 and 134 South J Street and 221 West Cypress Avenue that also make up a portion of the overall downtown parking lots. The total combined acreage of these three lots is .40 acres. Slide 16 consists of two lots side by side located at 127 and 137 South I Street that also make up a portion of the overall downtown parking lots the city owns. The total combined acreage of the two lots is .56 acres. Slide 17 consists of three lots side by side located at 128 and 132 South I Street and 117 West Cypress Avenue. The total combined acreage of all three lots is .48 acres. The grand total of all of these parking lots is 2.4 acres. The next slide shows the museum, which is housed in the historic library building. Not only is this a historical structure, but is a cultural and educational asset to the community. The museum curators, the Lompoc Museum Associates Incorporated, have very effectively taken care of not only the displays and artifacts, but have also made suggestions for maintenance and improvements to the property. A landscaping project was recently approved by the council at the meeting held on November 3rd, 2015, which established a memorandum of understanding for construction and maintenance of landscaping at the Lompoc Museum with the Lompoc Museum Associates Incorporated, making the city now only responsible for maintaining the grass areas in the landscaping of the lot. It is staff's recommendation to consider selling this property to this California nonprofit organization for $1, so as to ensure the continued community benefit of this property by such a proactive, highly capable group to render the proper care that is needed to maintain its capacity. The next group of slides, 19 through 20, are properties that if the lots were split, a portion of the parcel could be considered to sell. Slide 19 shows a parcel located at 1050 North D Street. This property currently houses our fire station too, as well as an electrical station. However, the portion of lot that is to be considered to lot-split off and sell is located directly beside the electrical station where I placed the red arrow that says area. And for reference, the other arrow shows D Street from where this picture's taken. And it currently sits as an open lot with only dispensable urban forestry remnants logs stored there. This area is approximately two and a half acres of the total 10.74 acreage lot. If approved to sell, there has been interest voiced, and the lot does already have a potential Slide 20 is a parcel located at the back of Beatty Park and currently has a water tank on part of the property. However, the other portion is not currently being used and could be sold if the lot was split to preserve the city's function for the water tank. It should be noted that the parcel is on a grade that would need to be considered for any future development. The last group of slides, 21 through 23, are all areas that currently sit vacant and may have possibilities for some other form of use. Slide 21 shows the East Central Avenue. Slide 21 shows the East Central Avenue parcel that was intended to be used as an expansion of Central Avenue. That expansion was never achieved, but consequently, the parcel that consists of 6.16 acres was also never developed. This parcel is in a housing area that could be developed into many homes that would structure the same way as the older homes with another residential street being added for access. This would ultimately add revenue in the way of additional property taxes to the city. Slide 22 shows parcels that are located either in or just outside of the San Yen Az River that runs to the east of the city. These lots total 226.11 acres. Even though the city owns them all, some parcels are located outside the city limits in the jurisdiction of the County of Santa Barbara. The city currently pays $1,776 per year in property taxes to the county on seven of the parcels that have assessed values greater than $0. Several of the properties were originally conceptualized by Caltrans for the Highway 1 bypass project. When those plans were abandoned, the city purchased these lots totaling 76.44 acres back from Caltrans, zoned them as parks, recreation, and open space, and put a bike trail on them. The last slide, 23, shows an area of land that is south of Highway 246 consisting of 17.41 acres, but has a majority of acreage in the river, as you can see. However, there may be some viable areas for other uses. This parcel is one of the seven mentioned before that the city pays property tax to the County of Santa Barbara. I would like to mention that as a grand total, these properties that were covered this evening, the rough estimate for the expenses of cost to maintain parks, trees, and parking lots is roughly about $170,983 per year. We do take in a revenue stream of $46,640 per year. We are asking council to authorize staff to initiate an RFQ to retain a professional service to assist in the selling of these parcels or provide alternate direction. That concludes my presentation and I am available to answer any questions the council may have.
Councilmember Humdol.
Yeah, I want to thank Laura on this. I gave a comment to Patrick several months ago that we should look at all the vacant properties we have and he gave the job to Laura and she did an excellent job. I'd still like to do a bus trip around and look at all those vacant lots. But the idea that, the interesting factor you just came up with is what our cost is to maintain lots that somebody else should have to worry about.
Right.
And there is some we can't do anything with and what, but I think as we put it down ourselves. I think that, my recommendation is whatever you need to do to keep on going, move the project instead of getting lost in the dust. It's a very good job, the layout on the pictures, I didn't realize all those. And we got a lot of land that we own, how, what was it, 200 acres?
Well, that's actually just the river parcels, but yeah, there's a lot of land.
Yeah, a lot of land, so I think, you can go on, but that's where I see it. I think that it's something, you know, everybody talks about our cost of doing business inside the city. If we can go ahead and sell those lands out so we don't have to cut the grass, you know, it's going to rain yet. We'll still have to cut the grass and get, and keep them clean and keep them neat and put it up for the general public and there'll be people in different areas that would like to have them. And it's interesting how many acres of parking lots we have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I just have, well, we'll go to public comment first and then we'll come back to the council.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. Several of the parcels I noticed were in Old Town. I own a property in Old Town. So if you were to sell the parking lots, what would be the implications for the people who have buildings that don't have a parking requirement? Would you then go back and push a parking requirement upon us, property holders? Or would we just stay exempt and have no place to park? Or are those businesses that had no limitations to park? The other thing is kind of off the wall. Before you'd actually go out for an RFQ, or I mean if you go out for an RFQ, I know there are probably some individuals that own parcels that you may have been interested. You might consider a land swap and that might solve your problem for your land acquisition for that fire department that you need to replace. That might be a potential thing that you can do and kill two birds with one stone, so to speak. That's it.
Thank you.
Pam Wall. About the parking lots downtown, yes. Where will the people park? And you need, you like to think out into the future and I think you need to do that. If the Lompoc Theater Project is successful, you're going to see a renovation and a revitalization of downtown and people will need to have a place to park. The parking lot, where the Economic Development Committee, I believe, was given almost a million dollars to put in restrooms there and had drawn up some plans. I know that's redevelopment agency money on the lots, but I believe that was transportation money that was given to them to put in the restrooms. Is that correct? Because that was almost a million dollars if I recall. I wanted to go back and look that up. But where does that money go if you do something with a parking lot? Is this to be fed into the transportation and maintenance complex that also will take care of us for another 50 or 80 years?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My recollection is the council took action and the committee did give some input and recommendations to council on where the buses would park.
Right.
The funding for the restrooms were not approved as part of that and have not been addressed yet. That's my recollection.
Well, we do need those restrooms downtown, the public restrooms downtown. We do need those and we do need parking available downtown if we are going to think about the future. Thank you.
Next, please.
My name is Mary Leach, citizen of Lompoc. Mayor Lingal and council members. Slides four through eight are the first mission in Lompoc. All of that property still has some of the historical monuments on it. All land south of Olive Avenue is required to have an archaeologist on site. I'm told even when I change my bulbs in my yard every spring, I'm supposed to have an archaeologist on site. I don't think that those are sellable lots unless it was a nonprofit and I'm sure that before we even think about selling that property, the CHUMASH would want to be involved in the whole process. The property on, in Beatty Park, first off, I think there should have been a lot more detail about these properties before you can even make any decision at all. But the property in Beatty Park, diatomaceous earth, is extremely solid, flat, but when it's on a slope, it's very unstable. So it's not, if, depending on the slope on that property, it's probably not very developable. All of the property in the river, the 19 parcels on the list, they're all in the flood zone. They're totally undevelopable. The, the Central Avenue extension, is that still on SB KEG's list?
No.
It's been relieved.
Turned it off a long time ago.
It's been removed from the list. Okay. We, my husband and I own property along Riverside Drive between Central Avenue and Barton. We're landlocked. Our historical access has been Central Avenue. The city put a fence there. We've had a couple discussions about access to that property and I want to consider that when you're thinking about this. We would need our historical access through Central Avenue. The land is ag land. Access has been through an easement for us for the last seven or eight years. But we're going to retire here soon and we hope to get out there and get our hands dirty. So just something for you to think about when you're looking at all these individual parcels. There needs to be a lot more specific information about each one before we make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening again, Mayor, councilmembers, John Lynn. I want to talk about a number of the parcels pretty rapidly. The downtown Pocket Park was originally acquired in two parcels. One was donated and one was purchased. So if you decide to eliminate that Pocket Park, we probably need to consider returning the property that was donated to the city. Probably selling the downtown parking lots might be one of the worst decisions because we wouldn't receive very much money out of it. The county would get the bulk of it. And as another person testified, that's the parking for all of downtown and surely with the great things going to happen with the theater project, we're going to be needing it. We did look at years ago, doing some kind of a development agreement on the front parcel with somebody who was going to build a second-story parking so we would retain the same number of parking spaces, but they would be able to develop the street frontage. That didn't pencil out, but you know, that could come along one day and would be something to consider. The parcels along the river were purchased with a blend of money and one of the items in the blend was Coastal Resource Enhancement Fund money and that established some deed limitations on the property for passive recreation and a bicycle path. And when I was mayor, we tried to put a playground on there and we couldn't even do that. So I don't think those parcels would be very sellable because of the deed restrictions that are on them. And I think our cost of maintenance and the community enjoyment of the bike path, we all understand. The Central Avenue extension is kind of a philosophical question. We want to retain that land for something that might happen someday that prior council voted we weren't going to do. I was recused from that because of adjoining property, so I couldn't even talk about it till now. That's probably about an $800,000 property because of the number of lots that are available in the area that it's in. Those lots at the beginning of the list certainly should be sold. Prior council chose not to sell them because the market was down. That is definitely not the case today. Those are certainly a viable property. I couldn't ever talk about the E Street property because it's next door to mine, but that would be a perfect property to sell because all the activities are there. Could be moved across the street to the F Street property. That's probably a $260,000 property. And in my last 38 seconds, I want to say to you the same thing that I said at budget time. This is not general fund money to spend. This is money that's coming in from, say, from a one-time revenue and it needs to be used for one-time improvements. If you don't know what to do with it now, put it in the rainy day fund until you do. Don't just spend it on the general fund. It needs to be on improvements. And at least one council member has a really good idea that they're going to share. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Let's see, no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Humdol.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting what the comments were about what we shouldn't sell. And there is some out to note, there is no common sense to say you're going to sell a parking lot and take it out of downtown. You know, it's just something that you think about. That's not going to happen and it'll stay down there. But we've got these other lots that's stuck all over town and I think they should, we looked at them and then you could go ahead and mark off the ones you can't sell. And like John, I talked to John today, is that the money we take in from this should be one-time money. It's going someplace and they'll have to go in different division, but it's one-time money. And as we get looking at it, I think that parks is one of those areas that could utilize it. We don't want it so it's ongoing. But I think that at least now, we at least got the process started. Take a look at it, go mark the ones that can sell, the ones that can't, leave them out there. And the ones in the river bottom are going to be paying the county tax on it all the time, just like we do River Park because they won't let us bring it in the city.
City administrator, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of points of clarification. Certainly as staff appreciate Ms. Candy's thorough presentation. As staff was reviewing the different land being held, we definitely recognized we move, these parcels were deliberately presented going from easy to more difficult. You know, we have more as you get into the different groups. They were grouped by challenges that exist, some with relatively few and little challenges to some that grow and involve some significant issues. What we're trying to ascertain here is first of all, councils, general, you're feeling at least for the majority of the council as to how accepting or not you are toward the idea of being able to sell some of these properties. I assume that we've got some favorable reactions to be able to sell at least those that we're initially looking at, that we consider to be immediately marketable and perhaps as well those that we considered also so to be immediately marketable, but we have a disclosure requirement regarding archaeological aspects that go on. I point out that our budget, the budget that was adopted included the assumption of about a million dollars in property sales and this is just carrying forward that budgetary, I guess, exercise to carry this out. So that's why we've been doing all this background and now are at a point where we'd like to involve a real estate professional to help guide us forward. Recognize all the concerns, including when we start to, when we realize people get uncomfortable if we start talking about parking lots. But for instance, if I were to say to you, hey, we've got a major hotel chain that wants to put a, something in downtown, they're looking at those parking lots. They'll abate the parking, that is. They'll make sure we end up with just as many parking spaces after as before. Will we turn them away because no, we don't want to touch parking lots? I don't think so. I think we'd entertain under the right circumstances converting those parking lots. So we recognize just to get rid of them isn't, and shrink our parking inventory probably isn't a bright move. We get that. But if the real estate's more valuable configured a different way, would we want to consider which way that, you know, we want to consider the alternatives? That's the question on this. I did want to point out also that we are just asking for your general, you know, we just wanted to do this presentation in general. We didn't want to ask for action on specific properties right now. We recognize that one or more of you may have conflicts when the time comes to act on specific properties. Will, the city attorney will help us to guide who needs to recuse themselves at certain points. This was an acceptable presentation of properties without having a conflict since we weren't asking for action on individual properties. With all of that, we at least need to have the discussion about what's going on and understand as we move forward in this process exactly what we're willing to do and what we're not interested in doing. And all of that's fair game. But what we are asking is some guidance from you on how you'd like to proceed at this point. Given we've done this initial review, we realize we have a ways to go before we're ready to engage in any transaction on anything. But would you like us to move forward with further evaluations? And I realize some people might also be a little, have a tender spot for the location of the former mission.
Thank you.
One of those moments. With the former side of the mission, recognizing we want to be very careful in whether we're dealing with our own property or somebody else's. dealing with our own property or somebody else's dealing with it. We want to be very careful of anything that may be of historic and cultural value that's there. At the same time, the mere site itself, you know, as long as we preserve the monumentation that's there, I think we're doing justice on that. The mere site itself, it would be different if we had a standing building or something like that. I have a different approach than that we just have empty land where something used to be. That there's a, you know, there's equivalent value whether we're owning the property or somebody else's, and we might be able to convert that to some cash for the sake of the budget. With that, that closes my comments. Thanks.
Councilmember Humdol.
Yeah, one thing he brought up is that there on I Street, we're talking about all the parking lots. You've got to remember, some of those parking lots were built hoping that the hotel was going to be built, the Holiday Inn was going to come in and build a whole hotel there. And that's why we got all the parking lots to help them out to move in, while they didn't come in. And so it's something to look at. I'm not trying to get rid of parking lots, but at least we need to look at our property and have, get an idea just what we have and what we shouldn't have to take care of. And there's a lot of the properties we're not going to be able to get rid of, but at least we now know that. I don't think everybody realizes how many pieces of property that is owned by the city scattered throughout the town.
Okay, I just have a couple of comments. First of all, Ms. Candy, I want to thank you as well for the work you put into this. We've all been talking about the number of properties that the city has, and this gives us a good idea of a lot of properties. I have no idea how we became owners of a lot of these things. But, yeah, but a couple of comments that was made. The Pocket Park is an issue because half of it was given to the city specifically for the park, so that's something that would have to come up during this discussion. I was wondering how we came up with, I know we own Westvale Park, but how we came up with that as a potential sale. It's a really cute little park.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the opportunity to speak to that.
I know we have a lot of parks.
It is a cute little park. And I like parks. Most cities actually strive to try to get to a target of having three acres of parks and open space per 1,000 residents. That would be what they'd state in their general plan as being their, the gold premium standard communities, those with, that are really overachievers, might make it four acres per thousand. We've got 14 per thousand. And so I recognize, walking in, that we are abundant in parkland for a community of our size. So just as you don't want to have too little parkland, once you get to where you have too much, it becomes quite the burden to maintain all that. And some people criticize the level at which we maintain our parks, and that's part and parcel with the fact that we have a lot more to maintain than most people of our size, of communities of our size. So that becomes an issue. So when we start looking around and trying to figure out, well, if we're going to be a little more selective, how would we approach that? And in this case, that particular cute little park is the smallest sort of footprint of a park that we have, which means it's the most expensive piece of our parks inventory. It is the most expensive piece to maintain on a per-acre basis. Because anytime you're going to, every time we go out to do maintenance on any park, we have set up and tear down time that is going to be constant for any location we stop at. And then from there, we have a cost per acre to maintain things. It costs us X amount of dollars to mow an acre of lawn. So we are not, you know, if you're mowing 20 acres versus only mowing two acres, you're carrying that overhead on one-tenth the size of an area you bring service to. So in short, your smallest park locations are going to be the ones that have the highest per square foot, highest per acre cost to maintain. So hence why I started looking at this. Additionally, just purely from my own parenthetical observations, I don't see it getting used much. I have, I drive by occasionally just to check on it, and I just don't see much use. Little bit of use I see is probably use we wouldn't want to see going on there. I know there's good use going on out there as well. One of the things that we've done in preparation to this time is we actually set up a camera to track and get some data about how much use is going on at the park and what kind of use is going on. So we'll be reviewing that and we'll have, we'll be a little more firm in our recommendations with that kind of data to back up. But we suspect it's not receiving a high use. It's the highest cost per, you know, getting used. It's situated near a larger park. It's stone's throw from Ryan, so the neighborhood could be served. And the value of the fact of converting that to, let's say, eight-quarter acre lots in the neighborhood might be of greater value than it is to us as a park, so.
Thank you for that quick response. Quick, because I can imagine.
Yeah, okay. So, let's see, the other comment is the parking lots, I think we've had that discussion, the value of parking lots and also the value of potentially selling them with the requirement of the buyer providing equal parking, if that makes sense. I agree with Mr. Lynn, though. A lot of that money would probably be going to the county or the hospital district because it is formerly RDA money.
Yeah, we have, in each case, by the way, we've tracked the type or color of money that's used in each case. Sometimes, we're not always talking about dollars that would flow to the general fund. The example of the piece of property, where we have this extended piece of property that touches into D Street, that involves Fire Station Two and other land, for instance, is money that was purchased from the water fund, and therefore, any sale of that property would need to stay with the Water Enterprise Fund. So we're very cautious of understanding, you know, what the color of money is in each case and to ensure that we're not overstepping the financial limitations that would be on such transactions.
Okay, thank you. Oh!
I just scared her.
They're teaming up on us.
Brad Wilkie, Finance Director. I want to add a little bit of possibilities to the idea of the parking lots. It's been mentioned that we have an arrangement with DOF to, once those properties are sold, if they're ever sold, through our long-range property management plan, that we would split, we would have an agreement with all the taxing entities to divide up those proceeds. We had already gotten our long-range property management plan approved by DOF before the state enacted a new law, which allows for the direct transfer of parking lots, any parking lots that have no income generation directly to the city, without any of those obligations. So if we so choose, the successor agency chooses, we have an opportunity to open up our long-range property management plan. And rather than having agreements that would split those proceeds, it would be just city property. And we wouldn't have any of those obligations to split those proceeds. We haven't made a decision to do that. We haven't even really considered doing that. But it is in state law that provides for the transfer of parking lots, because it was such a big contention all across the state, that they did that to recognize the fact that parking lots are really governmental facilities like a city hall, rather than what DOF thought was that they were cash cows generating millions of dollars a year that could go to the state to fix their budget hole, so.
If you could, Mr. Wilkie, could you just share a little bit about if we do a tax-sharing agreement, that the amount that goes to the other taxing entities is not necessarily all going to the county?
Correct. There seems to be fairly little discretion about how those agreements can go. There's, the mayor mentioned the hospital district. It gets a set percentage of any profit taxes that are generated within the RDA. It probably would not be much different than the existing ratios that exist on property tax now. So some goes to the school, some goes to state for ERAF, some goes to the city, some goes to the county. There's irrigation, the water district that has some part of it, there's a cemetery, there's a number of them. But the structure of that would probably look very much like how the tax increment is now distributed across to all those agencies, so.
Okay, thank you. And then, let's see, other comment, either City Manager or City Attorney, the museum. And I know it's, in the past, we've been able to sell properties for a dollar. How is this, I mean, how do we get around this gifting of public funds if we sell a property for a dollar?
Well, one way, comes right off the top of my head, is you could put a use restriction on it, that it has to be used for a particular purpose and has to be maintained in a certain way, which reduces the value of the property.
Okay.
And I would add, by the way, and the reason for the approach, actually, when I first started with the city, I identified we had three different properties that I saw in the same manner. One was Library Building, one was Mark's House, and one was the Carnegie Library Building that's now being used for the museum. All three wonderful assets, good structures, but in all three cases, being operated by a separate entity. And so we were at a position where we're the landlord and carry certain responsibilities and liabilities while we don't have the ongoing control of the building at that point. And in each case, I would have been recommending sale, the same sort of sale, sell it for a dollar, it's being run by the interested people, let's at least remove ourselves from the liability positions and the sort of blank check responsibility for paying for that. So we effectively did a transfer of the Mark's House for a dollar, and it's a successful move. In the library situation, instead, we brought the operations of the library in-house. So again, we do have control of the operation of the building as well as the ownership responsibilities, so we've aligned those. And in this case, we're just looking to repeat the same success style that we had with Mark's House.
Good. Okay, then my last comment, then we'll go to Councilmember Mosby. Mary Leach was up here a little while ago, and I'd like to recommend to staff to work, see if we can work with the Leaches to somehow get them access to their property. They've got a nice piece of property that is landlocked, and I don't know how it happened that they're landlocked, but maybe city staff can work with them to find some way of getting them some access to property through something. I don't know how it's done, so I'd just like to see if staff can work with them somehow getting some access to their property, so. Councilmember Mosby.
I just wanted to go back to a comment the City Manager made on the acres per thousand people. He said that we have a dozen acres per thousand or something. Is that all maintained or is that open space included, like bottom of the riverbed as part of that calculation number that you gave?
I was talking about open space, green space. So I wasn't counting.
Maintain.
I was counting the acreage that was provided to me on the list that I was reading for the various parks added up.
Do we have available the maintained acreage space for the thousand?
I imagine we do. I have to go back and look at it. I was looking on, that's the computation I did before I ever worked here, just as we, you know.
So I think the number is a little skewed because a lot of it is, I believe, the bottom of the riverbed, that, yeah, it is open space and is open space park, but when you use that number, it kind of skews it, it makes it sound like we have 1,000 acres of maintained grass out there, but I don't really think we have that.
I, the number was around 560 acres or something like that, so whatever the total.
I think it's right at 421.
Okay. Well, which case then, that makes it around 9.9 acres per thousand, we're still quite a bit over.
But it's not all maintained, but that's, you know, getting, continue on with a question with you, Mr. City Manager. I, I know you have a plan and you have a forethought and an understanding of a direction, and I can see the way we have it laid out here. Some of the properties, like you said in the beginning, are easier sales. And maybe a way to go in advance on this to look at, try to put the puzzle together to see what meets the million-dollar mark that you're looking at, because we want to push the easy button on this, because some of these could be complicated and could take time. And now that we have a list together as well, we could potentially see more coming back from the public of interest, which would also maybe help some of the properties that could be moved and motivated, now that we have a list compiled.
Right. My, those good observations, I would say, even moving down the list and getting into difficult things, I'd recognize not all these properties are going to be moved anytime soon. But even as I move down the list, even if I look at areas that are more challenging, some I can tell we may never, we may continue to be the owners, at least in my lifetime. But I'm also recognizing there's a lot of land, even though it might be difficult to divest ourselves of, doesn't really have a strategic value for us to have a continued ownership. We have a continued liability or we have other continued burdens, at least, costs for maintaining them or whatever, without them really factoring in an understanding of, well, why are we holding on to this? Sometimes a city deliberately holds on to property or finds some other alternate use in the meantime because it's got this long-term strategic use. Yeah, eventually, we're going to grow to this place and we're going to need, we're going to need to have a site to have a police substation or something like that. We've got some things that even though it might be hard to let go of, really, I'm looking at them going, why are we in this business? You know, it's just not our mission to be, to be landlords over things unless we're caring for them for the long term. But when there's not a strategic value to be had for the location, I don't know why we're hanging on to them.
Councilmember Mosby.
Again, I'd be willing to, you know, to give you a little latitude to come up with a shorter, more refined list and seeing what direction you feel, because you understand probably some of the restrictions on here and what funds you were looking, whether they are general fund generators or whether they're going to certain enterprises. But again, before this came forward, I'm sure you have a more concise plan. So maybe you could shut, sort of, I mean, I'm willing to put the time and we can go down here line by line if you want, but I think that you would.
Well, we could, but for right now, what we're looking for is to try to get, first of all, reconfirmation. You'd be open as a council to considering divesting ourselves of some of these and just to get a, you know, we've been digging to find out the facts and figures and data and restrictions, but we'd like to get, you know, a real estate marketing professional on board who can help guide us through that process before we come back and actually, well, doesn't mean just going out and selecting someone as easy as that would be for us, but going through, in our case, an RFQ process. But it's really just trying to find out if, you know, we're, you know, I'm doing, we're doing a pulse check here to figure out where you are as a council. Are you ready to move forward on that? If so, before we take any ultimate action, before we'd be saying, okay, here's the property we're ready to sell, we think we need to enter into that stage. But if you'd like to not do that and rather just move to where we lay out the specific plans and get to a dollar and get it to a million and stop, to me, it's a bigger, it's a bigger long-term program than that. My ultimate goal isn't a million dollars. My ultimate goal is, can we get rid of every piece of property? We don't have any business owning. owning?
Okay, uh, Councilmember Humdol.
I guess going along, I'm glad to hear his comments because that's what we have going. That's why I brought this up, we have vacant land that we're not doing anything with, we need to get it done. And we never set any pacifics and a lot of the pacifics are coming up tonight. Of course, you're talking about the old mission, well, there's been people in, living in houses on that old mission property and dig it up every time, the old part of the flower beds. So I've, I've known that piece of ground for a long time, but that is an issue that at least there is in a building, but it's got to be dedicated. So the thing is, is that we, all I want to do is find out what we had, we're going to have to go ahead and find out some more and then the Lord has it and it's all up to this council if he wants him to do it.
Okay, so what staff is recommending, they're not asking us to decide to sell any single piece of property, they're all, all they're doing is asking for direction from us to conceptually move forward with looking at the possibility of some of these. And as Councilmember Mosby mentioned, and we've all agreed, that the first several properties would probably be a, a no-brainer, as former council member Durham used to say, um, to go ahead and do, but maybe we can just have the staff come back with a plan, an overall plan for us, and I, I believe that is what you're asking for, is just, conceptually, do we agree that somehow unloading some of the excess property that we don't need, so.
Do you need a motion on that?
Uh, I think we should probably vote on that.
Well, I'll go ahead and move that, we go ahead and let the-
Is it your-
-station go ahead and come-
Staff recommendation?
Yeah. For staff.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. I'm sorry, public comment is closed. Public comment is closed. So, okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, um, written communications.
Nothing.
Okay, uh, oral communications, this is your last time to speak to us for up to two minutes.
So, Nicholas Gonzalez, resident, so I thought I heard somewhere in there that you were going to do an RFQ and hire a real estate professional. Did that just happen? It did, okay. Well, I was going to suggest, and that's why I was waving my hand, that you have many real estate professionals here within this community that would do a lot of this work for you for free. Because it's traditionally, um, if you put those properties out that you're interested in selling, there are agents out there that will do you a broker price opinion.
Yeah, that's, that's our-
And-
That's our plan.
Yeah, I, I just would hate to see you pay for a service that you can get for free in the hope that you would be able to, and, and the, and the, and the professionals within, within, within law book, I'm certain you have a wide variety that cover ranch, hilly, commercial, residential, so you'll have the expertise within our area and you can get those services for free and at which point then you can put an RFQ for the listings or the sales of the property.
Yes, I understand how that works. The idea is with the RFQ is that we go through and we do the selection based upon the appropriate process, in this case, an RFQ, with the understanding that their remuneration would be on the back end, that whatever we're doing up front, they're doing without charge, so to speak, but with the understanding, we're not going to have one person do all that work for free and then switch over and you, use somebody else to do the marketing. No, that's the individual that we would be selecting to provide us professional advice and then as, in, in return, we'd be, we'd be negotiating what the rate is at which they'd be getting their commission for, on, on sales.
Yeah, I just, because, the only reason I was concerned is, we heard of paying for something, but I didn't hear anything of cost or-
I never mentioned paying for something, I said we'd do an RFQ.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're going to close oral communication, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember-
Yeah, I got a couple more things. One is that, uh, I hope whoever's working on the sliding door out front, let's change it so we, uh, people don't have to get on their knees and turn the key to lock the gate and coming in, I think they're looking at that. Uh, we have a young lady in here that took a header the other day putting the key in it, so we know what that happened to our help, uh, on that door, so that needs to be done. Also, on Monday, yesterday, Brad Wilkie and I were, uh, walking through the, we had three young people from the Youth Leadership Law Book and Brad and I toured the Law Book, uh, offices here, then we went over to the fire department and over to the police department. Excellent tour, very good job, I want to thank Brad for the job he did, but the kids were pretty, really excited when we took them over to the fire department and, uh, police department, even though one young lady took pictures of herself at jail behind, behind the bars, but it was a very interesting time. So I just wanted to thank Brad and thank, uh, the group for coming in and, uh, let it go from there.
Thank you, you took me right into council requests and meeting reports, thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, nothing to report.
Councilmember Mosby.
It, I'd like to make a request about an older resolution and I'll pass a copy out to everybody, like, maybe we can enter into discussion and see where we're going with this. It, uh, is a resolution, it's an economic uncertainty fund, economic uncertainty fund and, um, in the last budget cycle and such, it was, it was combined together into the general fund. Uh, in the reporting, in the documents here, it's, uh, was diagrammed as what, non-committed fund, I believe it was, which I think it maybe should be looked at as being a committed fund. Could be, um, it's, it's money that was set aside, uh, since 94 for $2 million for, to be used for emergency use, but I would, um, just like making a council request, need two other people to bring it back for further discussion, to see if we want to continue this as it was in, in 94, um, as an economic uncertainty fund or if you guys want to go some other alternate direction with it.
Okay, he'll need a second and a third on that. Okay.
You know, I, I'll give it a second just for the clarity issue of this and then I can tie it in with the budget. I, I wouldn't mind a discussion on this at all.
Okay, we have a quest and a second, we have a third.
I'll give him a third.
Okay, it's done. Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no- Am I done?
Oh, I'm sorry, are you done?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. No, I, I had more for, yeah. Uh, coming up, we have the enterprise reimbursement allocation study and, uh, what do we call it? It's, uh, cost of service allocation program at City Enterprise Fund, cost reimbursement allocation. I know there's some draft documents around, I just wondered if we could get a hand on that before, the Friday before, is, can we, uh, is that available to us? Or do we, because, you know, we're going to get a book and we have to go and analyze something and we got a couple of days to do it, we get it on a Friday, i- if it's out there already, can, can we at least, um-
I don't think it's out there already, I don't think it's a public document yet. Do you know, Brad?
Sorry.
He's talking about the, uh, the, you know, your overhead allocation, um-
The cost allocation plan?
Right.
Um, that was provided to all the council members by the city clerk.
What, what I'm asking about is we have the March 1st meeting coming up and in that we have a discussion of cost of service allocation program and city enterprise fund cost reimbursement allocations. And there is a, there's a draft document that's out there right now, are we, are we entitled to see the draft document? And imagine it's going to be a draft document until we approve it.
That document is coming as part of that staff agenda.
Okay, so what he's asking is, they'd like, he's asking whether or not it's possible to see it before the Friday before the meeting. So would you like us, if we can't get it prepared in advance, then do you want us to hold this off? And like, if, if I can't give it to you till the Friday before the meeting, do you want to hold it off and for the, whatever the following meeting is, so you got a two-week advance notice or?
I, I would like to see that, I mean, it's, it's a lot when you got a book like this to get the time to go through it, you get it on a Friday at four o'clock-
Sure.
And then you, you know, a three-day weekend, I mean, fortunately we have three days this time, but-
Uh, what, what's, just tell us what our deadline is, if we can't make that meeting, we'll hold it over for the following meeting.
If I could get a week in advance, it'd be nice, you know, by Monday before, instead of that Friday, would be nice.
So if eight days-
I would recommend it not be a-
Eight days-
I would recommend it not be a draft though, because that can get confusing. I'd recommend it be the, whatever the final document is.
Whatever we're submitting for their consideration, the final draft, right.
Final draft, yeah.
No working, I, I'm with you, no working draft or we, we're, we, we sharing, so with that understanding, and I'm trying to clarify because I, I guess three of you need to get an agreement on this. Yeah, so your suggestion is if it's available eight days, um, in advance, on, on a given Monday for the following Tuesday, if we can have it to you by Monday, eight days prior to the meeting, it'll be good to go, we can get that in your hand and then you'll be ready to discuss it eight days later on, on the council meeting. If we're after that Monday, then if I understand, the, the desire is going to be, be to have us hold off and not set it for whatever the original intended date was, uh, but hold off two meetings, so if we give it to you during that week, but it wasn't on the Monday, it's, then it gives you a couple of weeks to be able to look at that.
Yeah, that, you know, I guess if two other council members want that and, or if they're-
Okay.
Anybody else want to do that or does everybody want to get their stuff on Friday and get a couple of days to read it? I don't know.
What kind of a document is it?
That?
Well, it's the, the results of the study that we've been doing since August of 2014 regarding-
Yeah, but his, his question is how, how big of a document is it?
I think the draft, the working draft that we've been going back and forth is about 40 pages.
Yeah, so it's a couple of days read then, it's done in CPA accounting-type terms?
Well, like all, like a lot of them, they have a, they have a-
I, I don't think we have a problem satisfying the request if that's the, the issue because it's not so time-sensitive that when we give it to you, if, if somehow like, let's say it's available on Wednesday, if that's not going to be enough time, we don't have a problem then setting it instead of the following Tuesday for two weeks after that. I don't see that as a problem.
I, truthfully, I'd like to have it longer, I've always been a proponent of the 11-day agenda, so to speak, so it certainly worked for me.
Yes, I mean, for those of us who, who do go and read every, you know, every word in a book, when you get something presented in front of us, I mean, I, you know, generally if I'm going to be voting on something, I want the time to read, to go through and-
Sure.
And at least after you read it, get a little bit of time to talk to people in the community about what you found in a document and it's, it's difficult when you, in this case here, this is, you know, see how many pages was this, 100 and, 150 pages, or 146, so you have to chew through it, go out, process it, talk to people, I mean, try to give us a little bit more time and, I mean, again, that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, so he has a second, I'll give him a third with a comment that I, if we make something like that available, there's people in the public that would like to see it as well, so.
Well, yeah, I'm aware of that, at the point that we're releasing the final draft to you, it becomes a public document for anyone else, I just didn't want you thinking there was a draft, other than working drafts, when you say floating around out there, I don't know where all it's floating, but if we're still working internally on it, that was my only concern.
Again, I don't know either, I just know that there's something out there. I've been trying to get, get to it and I mean, it's been what, a year and a half and it's, this is an item that we, we used in passing our budget and we're nine months later and we haven't really seen the document and I kind of feel we did something or we, we used supportable methodologies, you know, through a budget cycle, but we haven't really, you know, nine months later seen the document, so it's kind of what I've been asking to get down to is, I'd like to see what it was that we, uh, what we did.
You done?
I'm done.
Okay, Councilmember Starbuck.
Uh, once again, I'll report, I have nothing to report.
Okay, and I also have nothing to report, I've been to many meetings, but nothing at city expense. So with that, we are adjourned to the regular city council meeting, oh, joint meeting of the library or the city council and the Law Book Public Safety Commission, 5:30 PM on March 1st. Meeting's adjourned.